Heavenly Father, we pray for guidance and direction as matters of importance are discussed this evening. May the decisions made here be to the benefit of all the citizens of our community. Amen.
Okay, we have a couple proclamations this evening. And I'm gonna read proclamation one and accepting the proclamation will be Shawn Green, Recreation Supervisor, who also received the Employee of the Year recently of the City of El Segundo. So, yeah, let's give him a round of applause. So I'll read this, "Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of El Segundo, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community with Regent; and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens; and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community; and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors; and whereas the City of El Segundo recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore on this 17th day of July 2018, the Mayor and the members of this City Council, the City of El Segundo, California hereby proclaims the month of July 2018 as Parks and Recreation Month, and in doing so urges all its citizens to use and enjoy its parks, trails, open space, facilities, and recreation opportunities." So, Council, why don't we join Shawn Green and we'll do a little photo op?
Good evening, City Council. Just wanted to say thanks for the proclamation this evening. I looked it up today, it's been 33 years that we've been doing this in Parks and Rec, so it's pretty cool that we recognize this afternoon or this evening. And then one thing I did want to mention is Ryan Delgado and our social media team is doing a show, Show Us Your Summer for the month of July with our Parks and Rec Month. So, take a look at that on Instagram and Facebook.
Great. Thanks, Shawn. Congrats again. All right, we also have a presentation this evening and I'm really excited about hearing about this one. This young man, born and raised in El Segundo, quite the citizen himself, new police officer and also a standout surfer, really good, really good longboarder. So I think we probably have Chief Whalen coming up to talk about this fine young man.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I know he's familiar to a few of you guys, at least up there on Council, but it gives me great pleasure to introduce Josh Gilberts to you guys this evening. He is our newest police officer. Now unfortunately, he's been on the books for quite some time, so when we discuss vacancies, he's not counted towards that. But he just finished a couple weeks ago the academy. As I've said in his forum before, that's a very grueling time. It's about five and a half months. He's tested, he's put under a lot of stress. However, the biggest stress is yet to come, and Josh and I have talked about this. In the academy, you're cushioned if you fail. The worst thing that can happen to you is you're kicked out. Now he's entering the real world of policing. Now failure can mean life and death. It can mean somebody gets hurt. So the stakes are much higher. Fortunately, we have a fantastic training program. We're gonna train him to succeed. I'm excited about this. I'm equally excited the fact that we have a hometown, I'll call him a kid, he's not a kid, but the fact that he's a hometown, homegrown, he was born in Okinawa to a military family. Dad's a former Marine. Josh will tell you that that's what instilled in him a sense of service. And at a young age, they settled here in El Segundo. And I'm told that as a young man and high schooler, he could be seen pedaling his bike with a surfboard on it down to the beach, which is where his love for surfing and ultimate progression, where I guess he's quite an accomplished surfer right now. Now, we have about four surfers, so we're gonna be looking at category in the Police Olympics in that area. Maybe he'll even teach me to surf, who knows? But growing up in El Segundo, that provides a lot of value to us. When we get people who grow up here, they understand the community, they understand the uniqueness of the community and how special this place is. So it does give me truly great honor to introduce Josh Gilberts to you and tell you how excited I am for him.
Good evening. Like Chief Whalen said, I couldn't be more excited and honored to be here. The academy, like he said, was tough, it could be grueling at times, but this is where the real work starts. I couldn't be more passionate about this city and excited and dedicated, so it gives me that much more drive and commitment to put in that training that we're going to need. That's about it. It's gonna be a long haul, but I'm excited to get started on it. Thank you, Mom. And sir, for those of you who don't know, this is my mom and my sister. They're very supportive throughout the process. And yeah, I couldn't have done it without the support of family, friends. Thank you.
Congratulations, Officer Gilberts.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations.
Should we do a photo op, Chief? Let's do that. Thank you, Chief Whalen. All right, City Clerk, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Nichol.
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Councilmember Bran.
Present.
Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem Hursak.
Here.
And Mayor Boils.
Here.
Also, I need to apologize, apparently Pastor Lopez was in the audience. I just never came forward. I...
Is he still here? No, I assume he's left. Okay. We'll give, let's give him another op.
Not seeing him.
Okay. Maybe we can give him another opportunity soon? Great, thank you. All right, Public Communications, now is the time and place for any public communications. Five-minute limit per person. Yeah, hi, please state your name and address.
My name is Linda Cohen. You want my address? Yes?
Uh, yes.
530 Washington Street, El Segundo. It's a pleasure to be here in front of the new board, the new commissioners, and I see some of my friends. In any case, I represent the South Bay Music Association, and it's always a pleasure to do that. This Saturday evening, we're having a huge concert. Out in the lobby, you will find these flyers. If you haven't seen the signs, or seen the flyers, or heard about it from friends and family or acquaintances, that's why I'm here. Because I want everybody to know, we'd love to have a big audience. It's gonna be so much fun. It's called "Just For Laughs." This is a poster which you may or may not have seen around. And it's being played by the El Segundo Concert Band. Now, although it's for all ages, we change the time of the concert because we always have them at seven, and in actuality, we're having it at four because we hope that a lot of children will attend and seniors, and because then you can get home before dark. The concert is being, as usual, Stephen Allen Fox is the conductor, he has been for about 20 years, of the El Segundo Concert Band. And this is going to be one of our special concerts. In addition, if you haven't already sent in your Funniest Home Video, we're in the process of looking at the videos and we're having a ball. So, we're having the El Segundo's Funniest Home Videos Contest, and there'll be great prizes. And the idea is to enhance our interesting program, which I think Steve, the conductor, would say is very unserious because a lot of our programs have very, very serious undertones. But this one's gonna be great fun, and in between the music, we will have videos showing. So please send in your videos to inquiries@sbmusic.org. And please visit our website because learn more about us. We're kind of the best-kept secret in El Segundo as we support and keep the music playing here in our schools and certainly in the community. And at 4 o'clock, this event will be held in the El Segundo, what do we call it now?
Performing Arts Center.
Which we are so proud to be able to play in because it's not only gorgeous, it's well-run, and I think the audiences love it. Robert Soto, who is our band director, will also be playing, and that's a first. So you will enjoy hearing him. He will be playing the trombone. And to add to all of this fun, I want to tell you that at 6 o'clock when the concert's over, we're all gonna file out to the quad, the high school quad. And several of the merchants in the area will be available to provide food and ice cream and beverages. And we're gonna have a jazz band concert with our symposium students. So I will wrap it up by just telling you that in the last two weeks, we, the South Bay Music Association, has been running a camp. And it's for students, we call it "symposium." I'm not sure if people can relate to that. I, for one, like to call it a camp. It's two weeks, and we bring in professional teachers, and of course, Edie Rice is in charge. And every year, it's a huge success because the students come out and play for the audiences, and they just get such a kick out of it, and they've advanced so very much. So if you wanna have a wonderful event and participate in the concert, as well as after the concert, have dinner with us outside, picnic-style, or maybe dinner theater style, please come Saturday night, July 21st, which is only a few days from now. So, have I missed anything? I don't think so, but I certainly hope you'll pick up a flyer outside and join us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cohen.
Good evening. Wayne Millars, representing the El Segundo Rotary, which is presently housed at 520 Main Street. Honorable City Council Members, it is my pleasure to announce the El Segundo Rotary's 21st Annual Movie in the Park, which will be held Saturday, August 4th. We are featuring Mary Poppins, a great movie for the entire family. We have all kinds of entertainment, along with a variety of food and refreshments. Doors there will open at 4:00 PM at Chevron Park, and the movie begins at dusk. The El Segundo Rotary would like to give a special thank you to the City of El Segundo for its continued support of this family-oriented event. Thank you to the El Segundo Police Department Traffic Management Team for its support. We'd also like to thank Chevron and our many sponsors for making our 21st Annual Movie in the Park possible. We invite you, your families, and all of the community to join us on Saturday, August 4th, 4:00 PM at Chevron Park for Mary Poppins. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne, and thanks for your service. Rotary's a great cause. Okay, any other public comments?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmembers, and everyone at home or here in the chambers tonight. My name is Tracy Miller-Zarnicky, and I'm a 21-year resident of El Segundo, living now at 501 Oregon Street, and I'm currently serving as Chair of the City's Environmental Committee. I'm here to briefly comment on two items on tonight's agenda that tap into the environmental realms, offering just a few thoughts that I hope you and residents watching can keep in mind as we move forward. Both of these topics come back to the theme of change is inevitable, so let's be thoughtful about it. First, regarding the waste toller contract, I have participated in and listened to countless conversations, both in person and online, since this subject was first presented by Ken Berkman, our head of Public Works, last month. On the committee, we've actually been talking about this for about four years. I'm glad to hear that some residents are now taking the time to educate themselves about the reality of dealing with trash in today's world, where landfills are closing and overseas recycling options are no longer available. And with those facts in mind, many are coming to realize it's simply becoming harder and more expensive to deal with waste everywhere. Tougher state regulations are coming down the pipe, which means municipal practices have to change, which means our households are going to be affected one way or another. But right now, I'm sure we can all make some changes to our purchasing practices and lifestyles to reduce waste and reuse more items in our homes and businesses. Space for waste is not a sustainable resource, and I must say that "A for what you use" is looking like a more and more appropriate way to go, just like the use of water and gas and whatnot. It's the personally responsible thing to do. The concept of responsibility leads into another hot topic of the night, the Bird scooters. While I do not respect the "Ooh, we're a disruptor and rules don't apply to us" approach that this company has taken in entering our civic space, while similar companies have thoughtfully, patiently arranged official meetings with the city prior to doing business here, I do hope that Bird and others can become responsible, licensed, which means paying, partners in offering alternative transportation within our community. Similarly, I hope that residents and employees who come to town can embrace alternative transportation such as this or bike share because the more they do, the more both pollution and parking issues can be relieved a bit. On a personal note, I encourage users of these transportation devices to heed the rules of the road expressed in the newly released ESPD video, which is very cool, thank you for doing that, and to follow the Bird agreement stipulations in order to be safe, legal, and responsible, and also to not annoy non-users with careless riding and parking in places that is not respectful of their safety or space. Change can be hard, but it's certainly inevitable, and I hope that we can all move forward together with educated, thoughtful progress on these topics, not hindering our city with the "we've always done it that way", "we've never done it that way" sort of approach based on nostalgia, fear of change, and denial of reality. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarnicky. So if anyone is here related to any issue tonight, I see a lot of people in the audience. Now would be the time and place. There's not a public hearing later, so if you have any public comments that you would like heard, now would be the time to come up and state those.
Hi, good evening. My name is Barbara Jolson, live here in town, 236 Lumida. In regards to the trash, I just was curious as to where the money was going, where it was going to before, and how the City of El Segundo defrayed the cost before possibly initializing the $20 a month. And then, also, since the city provides recycling, does the city plan to no longer do the recycling program? And if so, do we give the cans back? And then, have we considered any other company based off of costs related to the expenses besides public services, which I believe is the current trash provider? And then, of course, the Birds. I, for one, am not a fan, but that being said does not mean that no one else obviously should. You're free to do what you want, but safety to me is a huge, huge thing, especially here in town. Excuse me. Earlier this evening, I actually saw a high, a Gino High Kid, no helmet, on the sidewalk, and he's speeding, and he actually specifically told me that he knew he wasn't supposed to, and he was slapped with a warning. So I know this is still very, very new in the town, but I'm just curious if law enforcement continues to give warnings, how is that actually helping them if they're not taking them away and they are clearly under the age? So, just a few little concerns there. And then, in regards to either Bird or their contractors dropping them back off in the morning, if they're left on, you know, a business's property, does that business, if somebody were to fall after taking it from somewhere on Main Street, are they gonna come back and not only sue Bird, but are they gonna sue? Is that business now then liable? So just a few concerns, just because, you know, we live in a small town and we want everybody to have fun and be safe, but this is a very new thing here in town, and I think we just need to keep up to speed in regards to the rules, the laws, and hopefully we can kind of come to a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jolson. Anyone else have public communication? Okay, I'll open up to City Council comments. Are there any?
Just want to thank those who came up to the mic and spoke. So many are in the audience today, but very few spoke, and standing up there is a bit nerve-wracking. It's a lot better sitting up here looking down there. It's not as nervous. But thank you.
Yeah, on the, a couple things, I want to thank Mrs. Cohen for talking about the South Bay Music Association, Wayne for coming up here about, talking about El Segundo Rotary, they're a great fundraiser, Movies in the Park, great service organization. Tracy for coming up and talking about Solid Waste and the Bird scooters, and Mrs. Jolson, of course, as well. With regards to Solid Waste and that issue later, I would say that, and I can turn it over to Greg, but in terms of where or how it was paid for in the past, it was simply a matter of it was coming right out of the general fund and taken away from other services that could be paid for, and you can expound on this a little bit in a sec, Greg. Other than Republic, we are looking at other vendors. This, the Council asked that we go to an RFP process. We haven't done that in quite some time. And what happens to recycling in the future? Recycling will continue to exist and is not going away. In fact, everything is pointing from a state level down to more and more recycling, including organics, in the future. So, did I miss anything there, Greg?
No, and Ken Berkman, our Public Works Director, will provide more detail in his presentation.
Great. Council, good? Okay, so we have a procedural motion, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 5-0. Okay, this is the time and place heretofore fixed for a public hearing. Consideration and possible action to open the public hearing and receive testimony regarding Environmental Assessment Number 1203 and Zone Text Amendment Number 18-02 to amend certain sections of the El Segundo Municipal Code pertaining to outdoor dining, allowed setback encroachments, and required parking for accessory uses in the light industrial M1 zone. And fiscal impact, none with this action. City Clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
It has not.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Carpenter, who's gonna make the presentation?
Mayor, Council, Greg McClan, our planning manager, will make this presentation. This is a, started as a private application, but because it is a zone change, it affects all the properties in that M1 zoning district.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Council. This is a code amendment that was initiated by an application, but it very, very closely meshed with plans that we had in the works anyway, so we seized on it and moved it forward. This is regarding outdoor dining, setback encroachments, and parking for accessory uses in the M1 zone. So a little, excuse me, a little bit of background. There are six buildings on Utah Avenue and Alaska Avenue that are currently being improved for creative office uses. And as part of the improvements, 2333 Utah came to us, or the owners of that building came to us and proposed an accessory café with outdoor seating. Unfortunately, the code does not allow these things in the configuration that it was proposed. So the applicant came back and proposed a code amendment to sections of the municipal code to allow this. And as I said, staff supports this. So let me give you a little bit of background on this particular property, even though the changes that we're proposing would be zone-wide. It's on Utah Avenue, very close to Douglas Street. You can see it in the middle of the picture, it's the white building with the bluish trim. And that area right there is where they're proposing to do the café and outdoor dining. As you can see, this area was formerly industrial. There's no place to eat anywhere around here, so they have a captive audience if they can get this approved. This is the front of the building, and this is just for your information to understand the origin of this application. And this is their proposal. So they want to have a coffee shop café with a patio in the front, encroaching into the front setback, which is 25 feet, for outdoor dining. Okay, so, the darker areas in this map are the M1 zones. This is a quarter mile radius around the property. Just to give a perspective, this is a five minute walk, this is a reasonable expectation that people will walk this far for lunch. And these are the primary places where you can go to eat. And you can see there's nothing close. The nearest ones are almost a mile away on Rosecrans. So everyone in this area routinely drives out for lunch every day, those that don't, you know, bring their own lunch. And that's a problem. But this is an opportunity. Within that yellow circle, there are probably thousands of people who occasionally will look for a closer place to eat where they can get on a bike or walk, and this is a solution that we'd like to see in this zone. So, obstacles to make this happen. One, outdoor dining greater than 200 square feet requires a conditional use permit. No outdoor dining is currently permitted in the front setback, which is 25 feet. And cafe parking is 670% higher than the industrial parking that the area was built at. That's because, I hope my math is right, but restaurants park at one for every 75 square feet, and the industrial areas are one per 500. So in order to convert a portion of an industrial building to restaurant, you almost have to build a parking structure. So this is the proposal. One is to remove the CUP requirement for outdoor dining in the M1 zone. And all of these changes that we're proposing apply only to M1 at this time. All setback encroachments for outdoor dining, or, excuse me, I should say allow, not all, but allow setback encroachments for outdoor dining to within five feet of the property line. And to allow the accessory uses to be parked at the same rate as the primary uses. And I'll go into each of these in just a bit more detail. So the justification for removing the CUP. First of all, it takes a lot of time, minimum three months. It's a burden because it, there's a cost to it, and there's a time to it. And, over the past 10 years, we went back and checked, the city has approved every single one of these requests for outdoor dining. So, we look at it and say, outdoor dining is a positive feature, even in this zone, and it's probably especially in this zone. And the CUP stands as a disincentive, so we're looking to remove that. The justification for the setback reduction is currently only landscaping and surface parking are allowed in the setback, so it serves as sort of a dead zone. And encroachment brings activity closer to the sidewalk, which we think is a good thing. We want to see more people walking and biking, possibly bird scootering in this area. But nonetheless, at least pedestrian activity is picking up. If there was a place to go, this will help. Now, we did a very similar change last year to the mixed-use south zone, which is down on Rosecrans, and it's been very successful. Apollo Landing has really taken off and transformed because in part of the allowance of outdoor dining close to the sidewalk. And the justification for parking the accessory uses is, as I said, it's an impossible hurdle right now to let something like a restaurant in. And it's not just restaurants, any use that has a different parking ratio from industrial will be difficult, other than storage. And restaurants are in demand in this area. We know this because we have an application, we actually have two applications, independently, in the very same area to do a restaurant. So we know this is, there's demand. I think that the potential for customers is tremendous, and not everybody wants to get out and drive every day, so this will be a good thing. So, solution. Accessory uses, and by accessory uses, I mean uses that are otherwise permitted in the zone anyway, would park at the same rate as the primary use. But, in order to keep it from, you know, getting weird and out of control, we'd like to limit it this time to 20% of the gross floor area. We think that that's a fair definition of what's accessory. Clearly, we could go to 49%, but 20 sounds right. So our reasons for supporting this, we want to, we remove the barriers to innovative solutions to problems that we didn't even perceive necessarily, but property owners in the area did. We, we're looking for ways to reduce the need for driving unnecessarily, and we're looking to encourage human scale activity near the street, as opposed to automobile scale. So our recommendation is that you take public testimony and then approve the zone text amendment to allow accessory uses to park at the same rate as the primary uses, and to allow outdoor dining without a CUP, and to permit setback encroachments for outdoor dining, all of them in the M1 zone. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and I noticed that the applicant's representative is here too, if you have questions to direct that way. And this, yes, this went to the planning commission and was recommended unanimously.
Okay. The public hearing is now open for public input, and the applicant would like to speak, we'll certainly welcome that.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Name's Michael Jones, I'm the exec with Sibley Jones Architects that was in this project. We feel very strongly in favor of it because we think that the immediate area, our client owns a significant square footage in that particular area, and they felt from, back from brokers, that the area lacked an amenity such as a cafe or something of that effect to be able to, to, well, benefit the surrounding area. Basically, what they would like, what they foresee this as is not a restaurant, but really a cafe. It would be basically from about 7:00 AM to 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon. No alcohol, Monday through Friday, dinner. So it truly would be serving the neighboring area, surrounding areas at rate.
I have a question for you, Mr. Jones. So it would not be open in the evening?
No.
Is that just something in our code precludes that from being, no, it's just a decision that the...
Decision, I mean, the operators that they've, they've talked to, there's an operation in Livest, Cabbage Patch. Very, you know, it's healthy food, it's, but their, their primary focus is really breakfast, lunch. They have no desire to have to have security or anything like that, or... The idea was also that it was really function purely for the neighboring work areas so that people wouldn't have to drive.
Got it, thank you. You have anything?
Just questions for staff.
Okay.
You got a question for the applicant?
This on the north side of Utah?
Yes.
It's one of Larry Fields' properties.
It's the old Comdev.
Comdev, yep.
Built satellites there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, I think that's it, yeah. All right, this is open for, before we go to council discussion, it's open for public input. Is there anyone that'd like to address this? Okay, I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay, council discussion.
Just a question for Greg. So, we're not requiring them to provide any additional parking for this as a restaurant, but they could be required by the health department to have, you know, a handicap spot with ADA access into the restaurant, correct?
Well, the handicap parking is controlled by us, and usually the handicap parking has to be as close to the entrance as possible. It's quite possible that they may need to shift some of the handicap parking closer to the restaurant part or the cafe part. That's not a problem because we make accommodation for that and make the loading zone. We may lose one space to make that happen, that happens all the time.
Okay. And just to Drew's point, the question. Restaurant in the zone, they can operate ultimately however long they want, just not 24 hours. What's the use right?
I don't know that there's even a restriction on preventing 24 hours, to be honest. It's a, it's allowed by right. We don't have any in the zone, as far as I can tell, because the parking makes it prohibitively impossible.
If they wanted to, they could apply for ABC license and come back to us if they wanted to at that point, correct?
Yes, they could. That would be a separate permit, it goes through the normal process. Their decision to stay open till 3:00 is a business decision. There's nothing in the city codes that prevent them from staying open for dinner.
Now, leaving that language in there as an auxiliary use, does that trigger any other codes that then preclude them from having the ability or the right to, say, operate as a bona fide, like restaurant bar, like bar and grill, if there was a pub over there? Because it's auxiliary use?
No, it had, the auxiliary use has to be a use that's otherwise permitted in the zone. Yeah. And besides, that, that use would require, I'm not entirely sure, at least in AUP at the very least, so it's, it would have to go through a discretionary approval process.
I just want to make sure that us calling it auxiliary use is not kind of pinholing us.
We don't see that as a realistic problem.
Okay.
Anything else from the council?
One more, the Comdev that was in there, are they still there? Or is that turned over, and what's going on in the building there? If anything?
The building is currently vacant. They are, literally, it's going through a complete renovation, doing a whole facade. Well, you've seen the front. We're also redoing the facade along the west. We are redoing the entire parking lot, restriping it, putting, there was no landscaping there before. We're adding all the landscaping required by the city. That's about it. And we don't, there's tenants for, there's, the building is one story until you get quite far in the back, about the last third of the building is a two-story portion of it.
Right.
That two-story portion is, is the only piece of it that's not leased at this point. Currently, it would be the cafe in the front. There is a design company that's going into the middle portion, and then FedEx is taking a piece in the back for a credit union training facility.
And then, Mr. Fields' partner, Gary is about ready to open Ascend.
Correct.
Nearly across the street there, so that'll bring some cafe patrons. And then directly across the street, is there anything going on in that building? It's immediately west of the Spectrum, Time Warner. Used to have the orange tile on the front.
West, that was what was torn down. Those two buildings were torn down to build Ascend.
Combined with Ascend, okay, got it, got it. I think he's got, he's got about the whole block there, both sides, yeah.
With the exception of that large corner of the, what is it, the southeast?
Aviation or...
Off aviation.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything further from the council? All right, city attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Mayor and council, an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code, section 15-2-7 and chapter 15-6A to remove the requirement that outdoor dining areas obtain a CUP in the M1 zone, reduce the required setbacks for outdoor dining area in the M1 zone, and revise how parking requirements for accessory uses are tabulated in the M1 zone. Is ready for introduction?
I'd like to introduce the ordinance, please.
Great, thank you, Don. Okay, second reading and adoption of the ordinance is scheduled for August 7th, 2018. Okay, under unfinished business, consideration and possible action to continue the discussion of the social host liability ordinance, fiscal impact none. I believe, Greg, there's still work being done on this?
Council asks the police chief to meet with concerned community members. He's done that, he's working with the city attorney's office to make some amendments. It was continued to tonight's date, so it had to appear on the agenda, but the recommendation is to continue to, August 21st.
Great, do we need to hear from chief? Chief, would you like to?
Unless you have any specific questions for him at this time.
Any questions for chief? Okay.
The only thing I just would like to put out there is we're going to, on July 31st, do a community meeting.
Okay.
We'll be pushing that out on social media early.
Great, thank you, chief. All right, well, do we need to vote on that, actually, Greg? Because it's on the agenda?
Um, yes, please.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to post?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh, thank you. Three, consideration and possible action to, one, determine the scope of services and schedule for the residential solid waste collection request for proposals; two, receive an update on the development of a Proposition 218 ballot to establish a maximum $20 monthly fee upon eligible residential dwellings for solid waste collection services; and three, authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the franchise agreement with Republic Services to continue providing services under the current agreement on a month-to-month basis for up to six months through April 30th, 2019. That's so we have no interruption in services. Fiscal impact to be determined. Ken Berkman, Director of Public Works?
Thank you. Honorable mayor, council members. There are three parts to this agenda item, all related to the residential solid waste collections in our city. One, the RFP, two, the Proposition 218 process, and three, extending Republic's franchise agreement. So as an intro, the El Segundo Municipal Code requires that the city, says the city shall collect and dispose of residential and miscellaneous refuse from every residential unit within the city at least once per week, where residential dwelling units are defined as single-family and two-family unit residences, not including condos and stock cooperatives. Initially, the city was set up to pay for and provide the services to multifamily properties of six units or fewer. In 2011, with an RFP process, the last time we did it, council decided multifamily units of four units and fewer would receive the service. This past June 19th, the city council received an update on the solid waste program and Republic's contract, and directed staff to prepare a new RFP for solid waste collection services and commence a Prop 218 process to assess a maximum $20 per month fee on residential units that would be eligible to receive the services. So first, for the residential solid waste collections RFP, the February 2011 RFP included multifamily properties with up to four units, which totals to 3,981 eligible service addresses. Republic was selected to provide these services for seven years through October 31st of this year. Under the current agreement, the city pays Republic $9.88 per unit per month for a total cost of approximately $472,000 per year. Additionally, 12 city facilities and the city's downtown area are serviced under the agreement, along with the others listed in the report. The city is the only city in LA County that uses curbside manual collection for its solid waste collections, and the existing contract includes the services listed in the report. It should be noted that the 12 city facilities in the downtown area were not included in the report by error, but they will be included in the base bid, in the, as a base bid item in the RFP. The RFP is set to include all the existing services, with the changes as noted in italics in the report. And first, the automated collections bid, the base bid items include weekly collection of trash, recyclables, and green waste with hauler-provided carts, four bulky item pickups per year, as opposed to the unlimited that we have now. And two core services, we suggest moving to an alternate bid item, the two annual cleanup weeks for bulky items, and the two annual document shredding events. Also, similarly, for the manual collections bid, we have weekly unlimited green waste, residents providing the containers. Weekly unlimited recyclables, the hauler provides 132 or 216-gallon containers, as they do now, the additional language or equivalent, depending on what they want to do. The four bulky item pickups per year, and then the two alternate beta items of the annual cleanup weeks for bulky items and the document shredding events. So staff is seeking to council's authorization to prepare the RFP, as noted above, and include the three and four unit properties, or with changes as directed by council. It should be noted that the city does not have the legal authority to require three or four unit properties to use the service. There are 85 three-unit and 104-unit properties in the city. And eliminating the services to these properties, 671 total, would result in an approximate annual savings of $80,000 to the general fund at the current rate of $9.88 per month per unit. With an estimated future rate that we're talking about of at least $20 per month per unit, the savings would be over $160,000 per year. It should also be noted here that if a recipient desires a lower level of service due to their own personal needs, such as smaller carts, they would only pay for those services at the actual amount up to $20 a month. Conversely, however, if someone wants greater than the baseline services, such as additional carts or larger carts, the city will need to pay any additional fees levied by the hauler upon that address. With direction tonight, staff will return to council on August 21st to request approval of the RFP and authorization to seek bids. Staff would bring a recommended hauler franchise agreement to council in December and initiate the start of the new service no later than May 31st. than May thirty first, based on a, um, proposed contract extension in the, uh, the third part of this presentation. So secondly, the prop two eighteen process. Uh, the city is one of only three cities in California that pays for its residents' solid waste collection, the others being San Diego and Commerce. Prop two eighteen protest ballots are required to be sent to property owners and customen- uh, customers, tenants that directly pay for the service. In El Segundo, since residents do not pay for the service, staff can only identify property owners, but not customers that may be tenants. With the city attorney's legal concurrence, staff recommends only property owners receive a ballot, and there will be only, as required, one protest per parcel counted if it's received. If a majority of parcels that receive a ballot protest the fee, it cannot be assessed. Staff intends to include language in the RFP in the next agreement that will require the selected hauler to collect the twenty dollar maximum, uh, at this point, uh, fee from the eligible service addresses. Um, a side note, the, uh, not a side note, but very pertently, uh, um, or importantly, the city manager will be executing an agreement with the consultant firm Koppel and Gruber Public Finance to provide all-inclusive services for this prop two eighteen effort. KGPF has excellent experience and an outstanding track record of developing and executing prop two eighteen efforts from many Southern California cities. And this will ensure open, transparent, and accurate prop two eighteen processing for us. Staff anticipates bringing the final ballot to council for your consideration at the August twenty first meeting concurrently with the RFP. If approved, staff would expect to hold the public hearing to open the ballots, um, or the protest ballots on October sixteenth, which provides for the forty-five day noticing requirement by law. A potential fiscal impact regarding the prop two eighteen with the thirty-nine, with the three thousand nine hundred and eighty-one eligible properties, the qualifying dwellings that receive the current, um, waste collection services, which includes the three and four, uh, unit properties, and a monthly fee of twenty dollars, it's estimated the general, that the general fund liability would be reduced by approximately nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars on an annual basis. Another, uh, thing to consider, um, staff is seeking direction as to whether or not a fifty percent reduction of the proposed fee should be implemented as part of our lifeline program. If there is not a majority protest and the fee will be implemented, the lifeline fifty percent fee reduction for qualifying households can also be implemented. So last, the Republic Services, um, agreement extension. Republic's agreement to provide residential solid waste collection services ends this Halloween, October thirty first. In order to ensure enough time is provided to complete the RFP process, negotiate the new agreement, educate the public on the new upcoming services, and set up the logistics and transition of the services, staff is recommending council authorize the city manager to extend the agreement with Republic for an additional six months maximum, and Republic's offer letter is included in your packet. You may recall Republic previously offered continuance of the services under the existing agreement for one year at a rate of nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents per month per property, and, uh, a two-year offer with rates at sixteen dollars and ninety-five cents the first year, and nineteen dollars and fifty-five cents the second year. Given the direction of council to commence the RFP and prop two eighteen process at the last meeting, the June nineteenth meeting, um, staff requested a revised proposal from Republic, who has now offered a month-to-month extension of their existing agreement with the city to a maximum of six months at a rate of sixteen dollars and fifty-five cents per month per eligible property, which would equate to three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, um, versus two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars at the nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, uh, that difference being one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Staff respectfully recommends city council authorize the city manager to amend the franchise agreement with Republic in this manner. As the existing agreement is in effect through October thirty first, staff will, um, request the necessary funds as part of the uh, fiscal year eighteen, nineteen budget process, as was noted in our budget session today. So with that, um, I'm here for any questions. Michelle Leonard of SCS Engineers, our solid waste consultant, is here, as are representatives from Republic as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berkman. Council comments or questions?
No question. Um, you're not trying to include, uh, the street sweeping in this, uh, deal, are you? Cause that's a separate contract now.
True. The street sweeping is not part of the Republic contract, though they do dispose of the sweeper debris. Interestingly, uh, as part of that question, one of the issues that we hear from folks that maybe have, um, concerns about the automated service is what happens with parking, and it's going to take up my parking space. So we would go through our, with the hauler, and make sure we're running the most efficient routes and set our sweeping schedule to match the, um, the trash collection schedule. Doesn't have to be that way, um, and some cities have them on different days, but that is one option to make it, um, easier for those concerned about that.
But the street sweeping contract would be with a separate entity.
Correct.
As it is now. And then on the, uh, the bid, can, can it be bid out so that, uh, it's two options? One would be the automated, that most everybody uses and, and, uh, the other one would be what we use now that nobody uses. Could we do, do that both ways?
The automated and the manual?
Yeah.
That is the recommendation that we are going forward with the RFP right now. The caveat that really wasn't included in my presentation, but is in the report, and we discussed it last meeting. Um, one of the issues with CalRecycle is the recycling element and our green waste element having, uh, gaps, as they call it. So, um, to have that brought into an automated service would be, uh, viewed positively, and the haulers in their response to the RFP, when they respond to the manual questions, we're going to make sure they say how they're going to do the green waste, how they're going to do the organics when they come. So that's, um, a very particular issue we need to include in the RFP.
Thank you.
I just had one question about the, um, we were going to ask the hauler to collect the twenty dollar fee. So that means that each of the residents would then have to set up an account with the new hauler?
That's correct.
And then, so they would just, in the, so how would you implement that? Given, you know, are you going to give a set amount of time, like to, cause that, that could be, um, problematic if someone doesn't know or doesn't?
Right. So part of the, um, as a result of the RFP and who we select and how much it's going to cost, we would be, Public Works and attorney's office and finance would be working on how we're going to actually bill this and the logistics of doing that. The transition period of a couple of months would definitely need to have to happen regardless of the type of service that comes to ensure everybody knows the facts of what it is, is coming, who's going to serve, how much it's going to cost, how do you pay, who do you pay? So all those details will be worked out internally and, uh, public outreach will definitely be conducted to make sure, um, everybody knows what's coming and how, how it's going to work.
It wouldn't be more feasible just to tie it to the water, like with, as far as we do the water bill?
Well, a couple of issues. Uh, the contract itself with the hauler will call out the, um, the requirements and, and they go through this process in cities where this is a bit new because no one pays yet. So that makes it different from what I see normally, and that usually you have a transition from one hauler to another, and so a new account's being set up, but as part of the contract, uh, the hauler will be required to do an outreach and, um, they'll probably need a good sixty days to be in communication with the property owners and set these up. Um, well, you know, it will be an undertaking for them, but as far as why the city, um, may not want to collect the money, um, well, there's a couple of reasons. One, there'll be an additional cost to the city, um, of, of staff time, and then two, there is still some, um, potential legal hope that someday a court might determine that if the city's not collecting the trash funds and it doesn't get any money from the operation, that it may not be subject to prop two eighteen. Um, that's not been ruled on definitively. Um, prop two eighteen says it does apply to trash. Um, the attorneys are all discussing this issue and have been for years, but it hasn't been litigated. There's a legal upside to potentially not collecting the money, or not having the city collect the money. And this issue's going to become, uh, important, and hopefully it will get resolved in the future because as the city looks at potentially franchising the commercial haulers, there's a real downside to the city if city franchises that, but then has to go to those, to the commercial businesses and say, you need now approve these rate. Um, so, prop two eighteen doesn't work very well with, uh, with trash in particular. Um, so, uh, I know it's a little lengthy, but there are, there's a legal advantage currently to letting that stay with the, uh, the hauler as far as collecting the payments.
Are we requiring as part of the RFP respondents to ensure that they have dumping permits for both green waste and organic, because those are not always co-mingled? And that is a, those are two separate dumping permits if I, as I understand it?
The, uh, the agreement, the RFP and the requirements of the bid, as well as the contract, which will be, uh, attached to the RFP, will be very detailed about, um, the various components that they will have to provide as far as hauling service, and it will be their obligation to be properly licensed for, um, all the services they provide.
I'd like, uh, Michelle Leonard of SCS to provide some more info, please?
Uh, good evening. Um, the RFP would require, uh, the, um, proposer to describe the methods they would use to collect the materials, whether it's refuse or recycling or the organics, and the, the disposition of that material, uh, what facilities they intend to use, um, and, um, you know, the status of those facilities in terms of, in, in relation to if they're permitted, uh, uh, within the state of California, what their capacity is, uh, what the, you know, the final disposition of material, particularly, you know, the organics, that's a real challenge. Uh, so we, we, you know, want to make sure that there is a, a home for that material, whether it's composted or digested or, or whatever, um, but we, um, we want to ensure that they're going to meet the requirements, uh, of the state for diverting that material for the.
And are they, are we requiring them to build in the compliance regime on that? Because I mean, the, the organics are the, are the long pole in the tent on this, right?
We're, we're going to, um, require that they, uh, indicate where that material will go. Uh, it may be different, you know, uh, in the first part of the, uh, contract versus the later part as capacity facilities are built in the area. Uh, we wouldn't require that they had to own and operate a facility, you know, they may have a contract uh, with another, uh, provider, uh, to, uh, process the materials.
No, but I mean, in terms of certifying which percentage is being, there's a verification regime that CalRecycle has found us a gap in. So are they going to be providing that, or are we going to have to be staffing that internally to have a trash checker?
We would, uh, we would require the, um, uh, service provider to, uh, provide reports uh, on a regular basis in terms of where the materials are going and diversion, uh, data, disposal data, et cetera.
I have a quick two eighteen question in our, our process on that. Are we wedded to, uh, charging up to, or, or telling residents that they will be obligated to the maximum that we're going to specify in that, or are we giving them an up to twenty dollars because we don't know what the RFP is going to come out to? I mean, are we, is this going to be a pass, are we, have we attached this that we are going to make them direct? Sounds like we, we're opting to have them directly contract with the trash hauler that we select. Uh, is that our only recourse?
Well, the council's direction at the last meeting was to start that process quickly and, um, and the proposal was to have it be up to twenty dollars, I guess lesser of twenty dollars or the actual cost for, um, resident. So that's where that came from. If, in order to, um, charge the actual, or propose to cha- charge the actual cost, we would need to wait till the, uh, proposals came in.
I only bring it up because previously there's a historical precedent, right, of us offering of you cover ten dollars and we'll cover the difference sort of thing, which obviously fell flat, uh, in the last decade. But is that, that is something that is not any sort of arrangement on that is not in the offing with our tactic of, of not being involved in the billing process?
No, that was, that was independent. I mean, the twenty dollars, like you said, was from last meeting. Um, council tonight could offer to go more or less, but it did not have anything to do with, um, staff time or billing time. It was just direct hauler related.
So Mark, question for you. So we're talking about a few different things here, right? We're talking about the prop two eighteen, what we're doing there, and then we're talking about the RFP process and how we're putting it out and what we're doing, right? So I think to Chris's point on that two eighteen ballot, I think we should discuss that, decide what we want to do, put that to bed, and then move our questions to this RFP process, so that we don't
Mix them.
mix them up and get confused and discuss too much at once?
Let's, let's address two eighteen then. So, um, we've talked at last meeting a lot about the need to do this. We're, uh, one of only three cities in all of California not passing this expense along. It's going to be a million dollars. It's the complexity and the costs associated with solid waste is going nowhere but up in the future. There's liability at play if we're not meeting compliance issues, um, and we have a lot of other unfunded projects. We spent four hours today, or at least three, talking about the budget, where we've been historically when there was a downturn, where we're headed, the fact that within three years, we're going to have a, we'll have structural deficits in this town, and that, um, some of us are more bullish than others in terms of measure C and what that will do, and whether or not we'll lose twenty percent of our revenue as we did in the past. Regardless, we have some major financial challenges ahead of us and, um, so I would like to move that we pass the fee. We go to the prop, through the prop two eighteen process for a maximum of up to twenty dollars a month per resident, depending on whatever the fee is that's passed on by the vendor that we choose to go with.
Do we have to stipulate a timeframe on that?
Uh, it'll be.
For the next five years, the next ten years?
That's a good question, and that is, do you want to have some CPI index on that over the five-year period or, or not? If, uh, you put the twenty dollars, for a five-year period, you could propose uh, a, an, an initial base amount and then CPI increases for a ti- five-year period. After that time period, the rate would stay in place, but you couldn't increase it again without another two eighteen process. So you, you could set a rate or rates, if you will, for a five-year period.
Does it have to be five years? Could it be indefinite? I mean, prices, CPI is either going up or it's not?
The, uh, the law was set such that you can, you can do it for a five-year period.
Five-year period, okay. So I'd like to amend my motion. I'll move that we, um, pass along the twenty dollar, up to twenty dollars a fee, uh, twenty dollar fee per month, depending on what the vendor comes back with in their proposal, and that, that, that is indexed to the CPI over five years.
I think there's thought going on here.
Just, just to be clear, you're not approving the ballot language tonight?
No, there, this is direction so that we can prepare the ballot language.
Chris? I mean, I, I think that there is probably maybe some, some palpable concern, uh, that, look, asking people to contribute to this is something that I think that, that broadly, there's a lot of agreement that, that the era of, of the city being able to absorb this cost in toto is far past, and the state, for reasons the state makes improbable and the greater market around waste disposal makes improbable. It's just too big a lump sum for us. So asking for a contribution is something that I think that we are well-founded and on solid legitu- logical and rational basis for. Taking something that we're previously providing and asking the citizenry to take the whole cost of, and a direct contribution, we could write that on Christmas cookies, and I really don't think that it has a chance of passing the two eighteen process. So I, 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 I think that there's, you know, I, I, I don't know the right way to, to do it in, in, in a direct contribution, obviously seems to have some, or excuse me, a, some sort of mixed model seems to have some, some legal morass around it as well. Um, so I may be a bit out of my depth on this, on trying to find a way forward, but, uh, it, it just seems to me that uh, if we ask them, if we ask the citizenry for the whole enchilada, we're going to get, we're going to be back here with nothing.
We're talking about, just to put it in context, twenty dollars per month, that's five dollars a week for solid waste, recycling, soon-to-be organics. Um, I don't know where you're going to get that kind of price in anywhere else. And I think that it's, if it's going to lose on a prop two eighteen, it's going to lose regardless of ten dollars or twenty dollars. That's my thought.
I have a question for, uh, Ken. Uh, you put out a survey you told us about last month, and you tested thirty-five dollars a month. I, I don't understand. I, I don't understand why you tested that high of an amount, given that $10 wasn't acceptable in 2011. And you got a 78% of the respondents said, no, not going to do it. But why test 35? Why not test 20 or something else?
Sure, through the mayor, fair question. The, the $35 came from my research. And looking around, are peer cities? But my error was including cities that provided their own trash service. Pasadena, I think Burbank, Torrance. They all were much higher than the, pretty much from the last presentation, the $22, $23 per month average. So in a way, perhaps that skewed those results a little bit. But to, to err on the side of, of a more fiscally conservative number, I guess, from what I saw, that's, that's what I put in there.
Okay. So it didn't go over well with the respondents?
True. And a lot of that has to do with it's free now, so I'm sure.
And then the current system with consolidated, how does that work? Do they invoice the city once a month and then we pay them?
I believe it's quarterly.
Quarterly.
Anyone from Pride and I see, but we, they invoice us and we pay them.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, Ken, the current cost per household is what today versus what it's going to be as of October 31st?
With the extension?
It's $9.88 today per month.
But as of October 31st with the new contract, it was going up by?
Oh, it was 1655. For the six months that we needed to do the process in the RFP and get it done.
As a reminder, it's up to $20, not necessarily $20. So if the vendor comes in at 1655, then it's 1655.
True.
Was my, yeah, motion.
But the idea too, is if the vendor comes in and they're $22, then the resident capped at 20, anything on top of that, we cover the cost for. So I, I hear we I'm with you and I'm with you.
Yeah.
Because I see it both sides and I think that you may be spot on, no matter where that number is, it's either going to pass or it's not going to pass. But I think that it gives us five a tremendous amount of understanding as to where our constituents stand. If we do say meet in the middle and say, look,
$10.
$10. And if they still say no,
Let me know.
that's going to dictate a lot of the decisions that follow for us because it's going to tell us exactly where our citizen base stands. Whereas if we say 20 and it doesn't pass, then we don't know. You know, can we walk them there? If we go 10 plus the CPI for five years with that 3% increase, I don't know. I think it gives it a chance. And if it still fails, you can say, I told you so publicly in a meeting, it'd be great.
How on earth did all these other 87 cities in LA County get this done? Were they pre-Prop 218 and they just decided to do it? Does it make sense?
Most cities have been charging for solid waste hauling for a long time, so. So that's, I, I I don't have to answer that's, you know, I just know that it's been very unusual, this city doesn't, and it's been very typical for decades and decades that cities, most cities do charge for it.
I mean, at some point in the future, if Joe Lilio's projections are correct about where we're headed, regardless of any downturn, this is assuming no downturn, in four years, three years, we have a structural deficit in a meaningful way. Joe, where's Joe? Oh, he just stepped out. There's the other Joe, hey. Joe, what's the number that we're short in four years from now roughly per year?
About $2 million.
Okay, $2 million and so we have that to look forward to in the future. So it's going to come down to, yes, we have measure C coming. But you know, that's contingent on LA County implementing a tax. We're pretty confident they'll do so. We, we have, we're going to have some major decisions ahead of us, especially knowing that Calpers costs are going up to 25% of our general fund in the future. So we're going to either have to raise taxes or reduce expenses or both. And so this is an, this is an opportunity for us to get at parity with our residents and do what the rest of the state of California is with very few exceptions. That's what we're talking about here.
So Rip, if we did go with the $10, how soon, like and then with the CPI, can we go, how would we go back out to raise it if we find out that the cost of trash is actually $30? We'd have to go back to another ballot?
Right, have to go back to the process. And just to make clear, I know it's in the staff report, but for the public listening, the process is sort of a reverse process and it was set by the voters in 1995 under Prop 218. It's not, wasn't something that was concocted by this city or any other city. It was the will of the voters and the processes that the property owners get a protest ballot. Actually, we don't have to provide them with a ballot, but we do for a lot of reasons. They could just otherwise it'd be sort of chaotic, but they're provided with a protest ballot and it takes a majority protest of the property owners to prevent the council from imposing a fee or a fee increase. And it's very rare that, I think there's only been a couple in the state where there's been a successful protest. And we never actually counted here in El Segundo in 2011, as I recall. We didn't count the actual number, but the recollection was the envelopes were more than 50%, but there could have been duplicates. There were a lot of envelopes.
You know, I've been here around a half a century and from what, what I've noticed is El Segundo voters will approve taxes that they don't have to pay. Okay, they're okay with those if tourists or foreigners pay them when they stay at the hotel, that's cool. If they're going to get stuck with it anyway because the county comes up with some new tax or something, okay, I'd rather keep that at home. But they're not near as receptive to taxes that are going to hit them personally. That, that's what I've seen over time. And we put out, we did all this. I've seen this movie, I think it was 2011. And we got over 3,000 responses. Don't you dare do $10. $10, we're now at 988, that's what I was shooting for, so. Seen the movie.
So do we have a second or someone want to make a different motion?
I, I have one more question for Mark. So you said it's a five year period. So fast forward for me, whatever happens, pass, don't pass, five years from now, let's say it passes. Okay, meaning that it doesn't get a 50% plus one protest. So say this $10 or $20 fee goes into effect. Five years from now, do we have to put that 218 out again?
No, you don't. You don't have to. You won't be able to increase whatever the $20 plus the CPI is at that time, let's say it's $23. It'll stay at $23 into the future until there's another 218.
With no increase, it'll just cap at that
Correct.
23 with no increase into Never Never Land?
Correct.
Okay, and it cannot be just revoked because the time period has run out? It would take a council, it would take a council saying, hey, let's put it back out there to vote to not pay for this again?
Right.
And it would take a citizen vote?
The council can at any time reduce tax or fee without a vote of the people. It's only if you want to impose a new fee or tax or increase one. You're free to delete them. You, you can't impose or increase one. So if you wanted to at any time get rid of the fee, you, you could. But into the future, it will stay for a five year period and then it'll stay after that. You just won't, it won't increase unless there's a further action.
Thank you. With that, I, sorry, Chris, I'm going to go back on Drew's team here. Because the chant, like the thought there is if it passes, it passes. And then at least we're covered because we know that 20, $20 with a 3% increase for five years is not going to get us anywhere near $30. Right? Yeah. Quickly on the math on that. And that's going into perpetuity. You know, because then we don't have to rely on, oh, well, we better go back out because if we're saying this, the organics is, what'd you say, the tall tent pole? Right? And if these costs continue to increase dramatically, then we're going to be caught or we're going to be left holding the bag or future councils are going to be left holding the bag. So I think we go for it, but I think we plead with our public to say, please, help us. We're trying to, we're trying to make the best decisions for you. Not for us, you know, and this is where we need your help. We need you to go into your own pocket and help us to cover this cost because we can't cover it like we always have. And I think that that has to be the plea from this council. You know, I think, I mean, I really hope you come with us on this one, Dawn, but I hope we get a 5-0 vote on this so that we send a message in the Herald article next week to the public that we need your help to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish for all of you. So if you want to make your motion again, I will now second it.
Just another point of context, we heard today, what was the height number of employees pre-recession last time, city employees?
320.
Where are we now?
We have 270 authorized, but 240 working.
So we're doing more with less, yes?
Yes.
We actually have more revenue, much more general fund revenue available, but we have way more liabilities and expenses than we've had. Some of them in the future with, with Calpers, et cetera. Again, the picture looks bleak, measure C or not in the future. And I think we need to ask our residents to help us along with this process. We got the plunge that needs help. We got plenty of seniors and others that want the plunge done. Got all kinds of capital improvement, needs for facilities in this town. We're at the table with all bargaining units again right now. I mean, look to our neighbors to the south, what have they done? They've had to make some tough decisions in some of our surrounding cities, right? We do not want to be in that situation. We're having, being forced to outsource public safety. The number one thing that our voters want and expect from us. To me, this is just financial prudence. So we have a second. We call for a vote. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you hear that one? I said aye.
Dawn?
No.
4-1, thank you.
Dawn. So now we can go to
Still like consensus on the RFP and then the six month extension.
I have some questions about the RFP and how specific we can get with the language. Some ideas were proposed to me and I, I thought they were quite brilliant. It talked, they, the question was asked to me was, how many days will collection happen? How many trucks will be doing the collecting? Because as right now, collects Monday through Friday for the one to four units. One truck picks up your trash, same guy goes and gets in another truck, comes back, picks up your recycling. So thought is, is well, how many trucks are going to be in town at one point each day and how many days of the week are those trucks going to be there? And can that be stipulated in the language of the RFP? Second thing is cans that are provided. I know in Redondo Beach, it's Athens service, but it says property of Redondo Beach on the can. And they have a dark can, a green can, a blue can for trash, green waste and recycling. Having those cans with our logo on them, because we may enter into a five year agreement with the trash company or a 10 year agreement, but if we own the cans, then we don't have to deal with buying more cans or have our public buy more cans. I also wanted to know if we could stipulate in the RFP that the trash provider provides us the initial cans? Three cans per like residents? A black, a green, a blue. And if we're going to ask for unlimited, as you stated, if I'm a resident where I'm like, hey, I got five kids and I produce more trash, I need another black can, that that would come on my, the cost from me, not the cost from the city. But I think that we should not put the cost of those cans on the residents. Those cans should be provided to them. But I would like the city to actually own those cans. If that's possible. And less days would be outstanding.
It's not generally the cities that own the cans, but I, it was Redondo Beach you said?
It says property of Redondo Beach right on top of the can. And it says Athens service on the side.
Interesting.
Which means that if they switch from Athens, that might get a little weird.
Well, I mean, my experience has been, and we have the consultant here who should, who should provide her experience, but is that when the hauler comes in, they bring their cans, they provide the cans. They leave, they take their cans and the new hauler brings in their cans. So, but that's been my experience. I'm, I'm saying the city can't own them. I'm not certain. And generally, the, the requirement is if something, the lid breaks, whatever, the wheels fall off, the hauler, assuming it wasn't intentional by the customer, the hauler is required to replace the can. So that's at least been the way I've drafted up these agreements. So I'm not certain why Redondo Beach wanted to own the cans. I'd have to look into that.
Well, maybe Athens owns them, but they're branded to Redondo Beach? As property of Redondo Beach? I mean, my, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, my thought with that is that if that can is not branded to the company by which that is picking it up, if in five years we put it out to bid again and there's a new low bidder and they come in, well, then we're not having the residents deal with changing out trash cans. Do you want to talk about logistical nightmare?
I just went through it. So yeah, or yeah, it's, it is done, but I'll, I know your experience is.
Typically, the hauler would provide the containers. And that's what we would stipulate under the automated collection. On the manual, it would be as it is now that residents would provide them. You don't really want to own the cans. Because again, if you change haulers, then what are you going to do with them? Getting and disposing of them, recycling of them, you know, could be, is a cost.
Well, the can's not pretty standard.
The cans say the city's name on it because you're trying to avoid a resident taking the can with them if they leave the city. They move out. And you may have been in other cities where, you know, you're, you're in Manhattan Beach and, you know, there's a a can there from Redondo Beach. Sometimes for whatever reason, people like those carts and they take them with them. So you want to try to avoid that by having, you know, cities. It also, you know, is a, a uniformity thing about, you know, you want all the cans to look alike and, and have, you can have your logo on them or not.
In your experience, is it typical, the hauler provides, say, the three can system? So I'm a resident, I would get three cans for free. But I need, it's unlimited trash collection, so I need another can. Is that provided to me for free of, free by that company or, or am I charged for that?
So we're trying to get people to throw out less and you, and, and use their recycling bin and their organics bin, their green waste bin more. So typically what you, you don't want to give them unlimited trash. You may offer to provide to them an extra recycling bin, an extra green bin. And then if someone does need an extra trash bin, there would be an additional charge. But, but all of that can be stipulated in the agreement and in the RFP. And everything, again, comes with a cost, right? If, if the hauler is going to provide containers, obviously that is going to be incorporated into their overall cost to the city.
And then another question for you, just to put this out there. I live in a triplex. Does every single door have a separate trash account? And there's nine trash cans for a triplex? Or is there one trash account for that one structure?
Well,
That's going to be interesting with your particular situation in that it will be the, the city won't have any control over that scenario. You will have to, you own, if you live in a unit of three or four units per property, the property owners are going to have to make a determination whether they voluntarily want to use whoever the successful bidder is and come to some agreement with them about how their trash will be picked up, what it'll be stored.
How is it charged to the city now then is a better question? Are three doors charged at?
Well, there's no charge at all right now, which is why
We're paying for it. So how are we charged for those three doors?
Oh, that I can't answer. I think it's a per unit charge for the total number of units, but.
Is our finance director here still? I'm not sure of the accounting process.
Got it. Sorry, I'm just trying to, these are the questions that are floating around out there.
Typically, you know, in most cities, it's four units and up and yes, each unit would have their own account and would have a set of the container. You know, base constraints, you know, are then looked at and, you know, can be worked out with the service provider.
And if I may, one of the things about our contract and the way it's set up in our law, only one in two residents are, they have to use our trash service. Three and four, they don't have to and there are units that don't use it. And they go out on their own and price out their own. And like you said, maybe I don't want, you know, this much. I just want one bin for my whole property. Also, as, as I mentioned previously in the, in the, in the opening kind of summary, with the Prop 218 process, when, that's one of the issues here. When somebody says, I need Um, when somebody says, I need more bins or I need larger bins above the base services that the city and the hauler are going to provide, that cost is going to be paid by the city. We can't have them pay additional. If it's above the, the twenty dollars.
I have a lot more questions, but I can't think of which one I want to ask you right now. Why don't you guys ask questions?
So like, for if if you have an ADU on your property, do you get one set of bins or do you get two sets of bins?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
If you have an ADU on your property. It's ground, it's our one property zoned, and you have now have an ADU on your property? Do you get one set of bins or two set of bins?
That'll come, that'll have to be determined by the, the property owners. It's a very good question.
It's actually another reason for passing this cost along because as ADUs increase from Sacramento legislature, it's going to be outside of our control in terms of if it's two units as opposed to one. Think about how many more we could be potentially paying for, especially Sacramento, you know, ties our hands with this legislation. I know Councilman Pimentel has a question or a thought.
Oh, I'm trying to decide if Amazon boxes count as bulky items for pickup. Because the small ziggurat of them that appears on my patio every week, uh, I it's interesting to nudge people's behavior, but getting them to break those boxes down to fit into a recycled container will be an experiment. That's not really a question, it's a ponder.
Interesting to note that Amazon grocery delivery went back to reusable materials. They were using reusable bags. They've gone away from that for some reason, which is a little disturbing.
I'd like to ask another question, I guess, of us, the council, which is currently um, like condominium and townhouse complexes. I think this is more pertains like a townhouse complex. You see a lot of these uh, four unit complexes being built around town. Now, they are not currently part of the we pay for your trash, okay? But so let's say the two eighteen goes through. Now, do we want them out contracting with a separate trash company that is not going to abide by, say, this shorter time period window that we've given? Or do we want them now just signing up with the trash company that we've contracted with and falling under that same banner so we have more uniformity? I spent a short period of time uh, renting, while I was building my house, renting a place on Virginia. And there was a trash truck in that alley every single day, every single day. I know, I, and it, it just baffled me because every time I pulled the car out of the driveway, I was, oh, I can't go that way, there's a trash truck. It's like, why is there a trash truck in this alley every single day? And it's just, it's, you know, you want to talk about the emissions that are being put out there, but and what are we doing about our footprint? Like, these are the kind of things that if we are talking about this, I think we talk about it, we decide what direction we want to go with it. And if those people are already paying for their trash, well, nothing's going to change.
Well, the three and four unit people are not paying unless they want to.
Townhouse users do.
In theory, um, if there's only four units, now they may decide they don't want to use the service the city's willing to pay for, they may just want a, a bin, they, they may not want carts, whatever, but uh, once, if if the city starts charging, the three and four units will have they will have no option for free service like they do now. They do have an option for s- free service in the moment, at the moment, but that will go away, and they will be on their own. They will voluntarily either sign up with the hauler the city chooses, they, or they will sign up with someone else.
Do we have a sense of how many three and four unit buildings there are in town roughly?
Six hundred and seventy-one.
Wow, that's pretty good. I'm sure that was on the staff report, I missed it.
Yeah, he said it, and a total of like eight hundred and something with the other. He didn't miss anything, Dawn.
So couldn't, so you're, the way it's currently written, currently they get free trash pickup, but with this new they wouldn't get free for that trash pickup, they'd have to figure, contract themselves. Couldn't we pick them up and just charge them for as many units that they have, the twenty dollars per unit?
They're willing to have us do it. I mean, it becomes, the real only reason at the moment, it's still, it's voluntary right now, the only reason that those that are using the city service, the reason they're doing it, it's free. But as soon as the city starts charging, um, we, our, the city's franchise, it was done many years ago. Um, is over one in two units. Um, it's not over anything larger. Um, I don't, that decision was made a long time ago, I don't know why it was done that way, but it was. Um, as the city looks to the future, it may want to franchise everything in the city. And the only real negative to that is the two eighteen process of while your regulatory bodies are pushing on the city to um, relay trash and all of the costs associated with that. The other side of it is you have to reach out for permission to charge those you're providing the service to, to actually pay for the service. And it's probably, you know, somewhat difficult with your residents, but then you get into the commercial side of it, and those are businesses. And really, again, I think Prop two eighteen is a little broken in some ways, but it is what it is.
Isn't the city of LA being challenged by a group of property owners over the commercial franchise hauler system that they put in place? Because they're making the argument that it should have been subject to a Prop two eighteen.
Uh, you know, I did read that, and I'm, I'm forgetting the detail. I have, I haven't read the, the filing, but I, I did read that that was occurring.
I think uh, we should move this along, so.
Honorable mayor?
Yes.
May I, just one thing?
Yes, please.
And Mark, correct me if I'm wrong. So our code requires trash for um, single and uh, and duplexes. They have to go with our trash service. The three and four units do not. However, our franchise currently with Republic has a list, and that includes all the four, three and four unit complexes. Which one question for council could be, you could say, we're not providing those, that service to those anymore, we're not going to offer, we're going to make it like it used to be with the five and six and greater. So is that correct with what we're asking for tonight, I believe? That's why three and four is part of the billing, no matter what. They could say, we don't want it, and they can go the other place, but Republic's contract, it's in their list, that's what they're getting paid.
Policy call again, right? The decision in two thousand and eleven was to no longer provide the service to five and six units on a piece of property, but to continue to cover one through four. Um, again legally, assuming that you can get through the Prop two eighteen process, you can only impose a charge on the one and two units. It's voluntarily on the three and four.
So I say we go forward with the RFP process and we continue to monitor and see what the impact is on the three and four unit buildings. And hopefully we don't have a, you know, dozen trash companies coming through town, through our alleys on different days and stay abreast of it. I don't think we're going to, that is a, that is a bigger challenge that we're not going to solve tonight. I think we need to get through this RFP for the current R one unit and R one and R two.
And we need to include the lifeline extension in this as well? Do we have to make that decision as well?
I think so, yeah.
We'd like to know that, yes, yes.
I would, yeah, I would just also, I guess, amend my motion to um, I'd move that we include the lifeline provision for those on the on that program or some similar program that they get the, the rate reduction. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, five oh. Oh, glad you came back for that one, Dawn.
Yeah. Thanks for waiting.
All right, let's see here.
La- and lastly, the extension for Republic Services.
There's a lot to this one. You guys keep putting all these really meaty topics on our agendas. I'm trying to get us out of here before midnight. And I really appreciate it very much.
What's the turnaround, what's the turnaround time on the RFP? Start to finish?
Um.
I mean.
I think it was nine months, so the, well, the whole process of getting through the entire contract process. The RFP would be, I think, um, four months.
So six months is definitely enough time, Ken? Oh, from the expiration date.
The contract goes through October.
And is it six months regardless or up to six months?
It's an offer of month to month.
Month to month, that's right.
After, starting November first, it would be month to month, so hopefully we can complete it quicker.
So I'll move to.
All right, I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh.
We hope staff hurries so that, that increased fee that we're paying doesn't last very long.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports of committees, commissions, and boards, consideration and possible action to adopt a resolution revising the environmental committee bylaws. We have someone discussing this, Greg?
Basically, the environmental committee would like to amend the days and hours that they meet to uh, make it a more I think functional, environmentally friendly uh, process, so they're going from night meetings to daytime meetings.
Okay, that's the material change. Do you want to? Yeah, thank you. So we have the chair of the environmental committee, Tracy Zarnik, she's going to address the mic, thank you.
Good morning, person.
Um, the quick explanation is that uh, our meeting currently falls outside of standard city hall business hours. Which fires, will be here over, you know, past the working hours and others who can't attend because they have other prior commitments. So the committee and staff have figured a new date and time that should be more conducive to say, having open buildings when we're trying to have our meeting and hopefully having our city council members who are part of our committee attend as well.
Great.
Only reason we're asking.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Zarniki. All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five oh. Thank you, Mrs. Zarniki, for your continued leadership in the environmental committee. All right, we've got number, item five, consideration and possible action to announce the appointments to the library board of trustees and the economic development advisory council. This council has spent the last, well, since the new members got on, since May, essentially interviewing candidates, which is great. It's a great problem to have, spent a lot of time on it. And let me find my notes here, just getting used to this technology. So uh, we have two appointees to the library board of trustees. David Jantta will continue and Carol Erickson will join. Uh, David Jantta's term expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Carol's term expires June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, at which point she'd be eligible again to reapply and re-interview, so we're excited about that. For the economic development advisory council, we have four positions being filled with no current term expiration. I know that's something they're exploring as a, as a council. Lance Dero, Tim Harris, Lance is a entrepreneur and uh, well, an entrepreneur, VP of Sales for a shoe company, major shoe company here in town. Excited to have him. Tim Zer- Tim Harris is the CEO of the Lakers, that's a huge opportunity for us on EDEC. Karine Murat is head of government affairs for Mattel, she's been a longstanding member of the business community here. And Jim McCauley is also joining, Jim is um, a partner with, is it PWC or who's, who's Jim with, Chris? I forget now. Ernst &amp; Young, one of the big four. So four or six new additions to our committees, commissions, and boards, we're excited about that. All right, consent agenda, do we have? I don't think there, no, there's no, no approval required. Yes, thanks. Uh, any polls from the consent agenda?
Yes, um, staff is pulling the minutes of June nineteenth and June twenty-fifth, they are not.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to pull item ten for discussion, that the public understands the rationale behind that decision.
And number eleven.
And number eleven, okay. Do I have a motion to approve items six, seven, eight, nine, six, seven, eight, nine?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five oh, okay, item ten, I'll read this one and then Scott will ask you to read item eleven. Ten is consideration and possible action to terminate the residential sound RSI. I'm sorry, residential sound insulation RSI program and authorize the city manager to take any actions needed to terminate the program, including but, but not limited to one, terminate existing agreements and notify applicable residents. Two, eliminate the RSI manager position. And three, direct staff to work with Los Angeles World Airport, Lawa, to transition to take over the responsibility of treating the remaining applicable homes, fiscal impact fifty thousand dollars. Greg, would you mind addressing this one, please?
Um, I, I will start and I'll ask Sam Lee to, to add anything and potentially the city attorney. Um, but the residential sound insulation is a program that occurs throughout the country and is typically operated by the airport, which makes some sense because they're, they're the entity that's making the noise, they're making these properties incompatible, they're, they're disturbing people's, people's quality of life. And they typically take on that responsibility. In uh, I think prior to two thousand and five, we started operating a residential sound insulation program and working directly with the federal government because we weren't happy with some of the rules that Lawa wanted to place on the program. The city reached a settlement agreement with Lawa in two thousand and five. And Lawa agreed at that time to a residential sound insulation program operated by the city of El Segundo because we thought we could add value and, and provide some additional things that Lawa wouldn't otherwise do, like have a, have a, have it um, be a voluntary program where people signed up as they were ready. Um, we were offering additional owner upgrades that, that were available to people. Um, we were very closely monitoring the construction, we had people overseeing the contractors. Um, and we were adding, in my, in my view, adding value to this process and making sure that our residents got um, got a better level of service and then might otherwise be available under other RSI programs. That ability is slowly eroded, um, really since probably two thousand and ten. Um, we've come under additional scrutiny from both Lawa and from FAA, primarily around the, the pricing. But it was costing a lot of money to do RS, RSI work in El Segundo because of um, probably a number of reasons. But, but it became more and more difficult, um, both here locally to operate an RSI program, but also nationally. The federal government uh, began um, enforcing standards, which were on the books, but really hadn't been closely enforced by them. Where properties are now having to be tested to see if they qualify, if there's enough noise impact um, in order for them to qualify for the program. Previously, it was, it was simply a matter of being within a certain noise contour. Your house was built after or prior to a certain date, you qualified, we went out and, and treated you. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, the federal government announced that it was no longer going to allow that process, that this testing process now was going to apply. We believe that with the testing process, that a much larger group of, of homes are not going to qualify because they aren't as sound impacted as other older homes. Um, the RSI programs throughout the country, to my understanding, have largely shut down since two thousand and sixteen because we're still waiting for some understanding of how this testing protocol is going to work. Um, when this came about in El Segundo, and our, our work ceased in two thousand and sixteen. Um, we unfortunately had to let the RSI employees go. Um, we've been able to rehire a couple of them in other roles, but, but let the majority of those employees go. We did keep the RSI manager on board because we had fronted, and this is really another issue. Um, we had fronted about seven million dollars in general fund money for these programs to occur because the way the program is set up. Um, there's two different sources of money, typically eighty percent of the money comes from the federal government. They, they approve us um, ex- expending our money and then they reimburse us. Uh, twenty percent of the money typically comes from um, LA airport and under the settlement agreement, they were granting us the money. We were, we were holding the money and then expending it and reporting back on, on those expenditures. We got in a situation with the federal government where they started contesting expenditures primarily on the furnaces. We were, we were installing furnaces, um, as was a fairly common practice, my understanding, across the country. Um, our, the, the federal government decided that that wasn't quite clear in the rules and that they, they were holding up um, a lot of city of El Segundo general fund money until we resolved that. Luckily, we did resolve it. It took a year and a half, two years to get that resolved, but um, we were out seven million dollars for about two years of, of our dollars. And that's, I just bring that up because I think that's typical of where the program has become stalled. Um, staff's recommendation is that we terminate this program and start talking to Lawa and the, and the conversations have actually already begun, but about having them assume this responsibility. We don't see that we are adding value to our residents in being a middleman essentially in this process any longer. Lawa has much better relationships with the FAA than we do. They have much more leverage and political authority to get the FAA to move forward with deciding how this program's going to work. And we think that they can do this um, certainly quicker than the city of El Segundo could. We do believe that, that based on the changes to the acoustic testing protocol, to the scrutiny over the billing and the tightening up of the scope of work that's allowed, that um, this is going to be a reduced program overall, um, from what. that this is going to be a reduced program overall from what it used to be. And for those reasons, staff is recommending that the council officially terminate the program. We'll unfortunately be reducing our, our last staff person in this program since we are no longer operating it. And we'll notify the residents, we have notified the airport already, and we'll, and we'll begin working with the airport to get more information about how and when they can assume this program. We have information available on our website, we will certainly provide more communication out to our residents who are affected by this. But at the end of the day, I think this is the best decision for the city as an organization and likely the best, the best approach for our residents so they can get treated more directly by the, by the airport and the entity that's, that's creating this issue for them.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions for Greg?
I have one question. So if a resident has applied for an, an upgrade and they've been sitting on the list for 10 years, do they have to reapply with this new changeover? Or are, are the applicants that have been in the works or sitting in there going to be turned, turned, turned over to Lawa?
We need to work with Lawa on the specifics. We would certainly turn, turn over our waiting list. The waiting list has largely been reduced because people that have signed up have either been treated or with the change in the contour that occurred, that a lot of the people that were in what was termed the yellow area no longer qualify for treatment. So I think we have a, a much smaller list of people that remain in the green area that have not been treated yet. Lawa historically has not really, my understanding is not really created a list as much as gone block by block. They go to a block of property and say, folks, sign up now or forever hold your peace. And they, that was one of the things that we thought we were adding value in originally, was we were letting people sign up as they were ready. Lawa's approach traditionally has been to do it area by area, more efficient that way to get it done. It's obviously less appealing to people who aren't quite ready for the construction to occur, but that's how Lawa has traditionally run their program.
So there will be a communication element from the city to the residents, though? Okay.
And I know, Sam, you posted FAQs anticipating some of the concerns and questions that residents would have. Do you know if you've had any traction on that page, is it in terms of visitors?
No, I, in terms of visitors to the website, I, I don't know, but we haven't received any phone calls about it. In addition to the FAQs, we put, we put a spreadsheet together, kind of a historical list of all people who've gone through the program to identify when they went through, who were the contractors involved in their particular project and whatnot. Some information if that kind of connects to the frequently, frequently asked question.
Okay, any further questions?
I just think there needs to be, we need to ensure that there's some degree of handholding on this because obviously when we turn people loose to a, a, I mean, this is not a faceless entity, whereas Lawa is a faceless ent- entity to people. We need to make sure that i- in tune with those frequently asked questions, that we're providing them some guidance, even if it's on a somewhat informal basis of, 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 you know, what's next. Certainly, historically, we do not enjoy the same sort of priority that some other areas have in dealing with the airport. So I think that we need to make sure that we're not, even though the airport has abandoned these people's concern as it comes to using us as a conduit to them, we can't, you know, just throw them to the wolves of the airport alone and unafraid.
To, to Chris's point, could we assign someone within the city to gather complaints or to be a conduit to, like, a person that can bring complaints to Lawa so that we ensure that we're gathering informations that we can have for future reference? Like a point person within our city that if there's any issues, if a resident has issues or has been trying to get hold of Lawa or they can't get a hold, they have issues, that they can go to one person, designated person within the city?
That, that person would be me.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, so I'm going to move that we approve item 10?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I pulled?
Five oh, okay, great.
I pulled item 11, consideration and possible action to receive and file a report on revised scope of work to the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transit Authority, Metro, related to the pending transit-oriented development planning grant and metro response, fiscal impact unknown. Reason I pulled it was I, I wanted staff to have an opportunity to tell us what that response was, we can get that out in the public, so it wasn't just buried in consent.
So, so council did direct staff to amend our application to remove the housing study component. The majority of council was not interested in, in working with Metro or studying the housing issue. We amended our application, we submitted to Metro, and the response, response back to us is attached to the staff report. But, but in summary, it is that Metro feels that the housing element is a key component of these types of grants. And they would not, we didn't receive the same sort of priority scoring that they use to grant these funds without the housing element. They did offer us the option, and I guess the option exists before you tonight, to go back to the original plan, which is include the, the housing study piece, but based on the input that staff received from council when this was discussed. It's our understanding that you're not interested in, in pursuing that. So our recommendation is to receive and file this report so that we are publicly sort of closing the loop and we'll notify, if that is the council's desire, we'll notify Metro that while we appreciate their, their consideration, we're not going to be accepting the grant.
Thank you for that.
All right, would you like to move this forward?
Yeah, I just wanted to give us an opportunity to speak on it, but seeing none, I will make a motion to approve item 11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. All right, new business. Before we go into new business, I actually have to recuse myself on this topic related to Bird Scooters. Just discovered recently they're a client to one of my businesses, we pick up batteries for them. And, but before we do that, I think Mayor Pro Tem is going to lead number 12 and we'd like to do a quick recess. What time would you like to come back, Carol?
Uh, five minutes.
Five minutes, okay, 20:57 or 8:57, thank you.
Because the POA, they did a video, the bird, no, the bird. Okay, so the cheapest? You ready, Don? Do we need, Greg? Greg, do we need, um? Greg? 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 Do we need, um? Okay, so we're starting back 9:01, we're going to talk new business. So we have item number 12, considering, consideration and possible action to receive a presentation by both staff and a representative of the Bird Scooter Company on the impact of the Bird scooters, motorized scooters that people br- people pay to ride. They are operated from a standing position similar to the skateboard with handle, handlebars within the El Segundo community. Fiscal impact unknown. So we're going to start with Chief Whalen.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council. I'm going to be making a joint presentation this evening. With me, our principal planner, Paul Samaras. He's been working in this shared scooter, bike world for a while now. As, as this phenomenon has been growing throughout the, the region and, and the country, we have been looking at how do we thoughtfully approach this. And so Paul has been a part of that conversation and is really recognized throughout the, the South Bay as one that has been leading the charge on that. And so since he has a vested effort in it, he's going to be a part of the presentation this evening. Tim Harder from the Bird Company. Oh, right behind me. Tim is going to be presenting to you a little bit of the overview of the company and he has promised to have some analytics that apparently one of the things about this scooter is they can analyze how it's used, when it's used, where, why, and all that type of thing, and so he's going to present that. And then I, I will, I will also have a presentation to talk about a residential survey that we did, as well as some things that we've observed and our calls for service related to the scooter situation. And then we'll, we'll, we'll have discussion with folks on that. So we're going to start with Tim, his presentation first, followed by Paul and I.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name's Tim Harder. I handle government affairs for Southern California and Arizona for Bird. Before that, I was with the state assembly members office for the past five years, up in the Santa Monica area, just north of here, Ottenberg's office. But I'm going to start with that. So Bird, who is Bird? Bird's an electric motorized scooter rental company in El Segundo with, we deploy 30 scooters. We're safe, reliable, last mile electric transportation for everyone, all the benefits of a shared electric vehicle with a footprint smaller than a bicycle. You can see there, there's someone in the protected bike lane on one of, in Santa Monica. Bird is helping El Segundo reduce traffic and congestion, reducing parking problems, reducing carbon emissions, promoting local businesses, providing affordable transportation, and the best thing about it is there's no city investment needed. How it works, you download your app, you see all those Bird scooters on the left there, they pop up all over the place. You walk to one, jump on it, there's a QR code on all of them, there's also a code that you can type in. You scan it and then off you go. So you can see on the right there, there was a ride time of about 10 minutes and 29 seconds, a distance of 1.8 miles. The cost was $2.50. So our motto is safety first, so always wear a helmet, 15 miles per hour max speed. Our scooters actually come at 22 miles per hour and we de-throttle them to 15 miles per hour. There's a, our app requires a driver's license scan, so you have to scan the front and the back of the barcode to operate, to, when you, before you take your first ride. You must be 18 plus. That's one rider per Bird, and we always follow traffic laws. We are actually able to localize laws in our app so that we can put specific things in there. For instance, so in Santa Monica, there's no third street promenade riding allowed. So we have that as one of the local rules and allows enforcement to happen on that. Park your bird safely, so we encourage it to be parked next to bike racks. And what we do is the street furniture zone is what we ask for, near to be light posts, benches, stuff like that, you know. So I was just walking around downtown area earlier before this and saw, saw it, a lot parked in the street furniture zone, so that was good. And then we also have it on the, every floorboard. So now on every scooter, it has ride safety, helmet required, license required, no riding on sidewalks, was recently. no riding on sidewalks, was recently added. That was a lot we were hearing from cities, so we added that now on all, every scooter. No double riding, eighteen plus years old. And then our, um, constant access, hello at bird.co, and then a phone number, um, that's twenty-four seven. And then we just added a text message feature as well. Um, so you'll be able to text, uh, concerns as well. So the Bird difference is smart scaling, demand determines supply. So for instance, uh, if there's, um, you know, not that many rides happening, then we're not gonna put that many scooters there. Uh, if there's, we see demand going up and there's demand determines supply. So we're not gonna have our scooters sitting on the street and not making any money. Um, if we see more rides going up, uh, then we add more to the market. Uh, we do active bird management, small footprint, um, bird nests in partnership with local businesses, so we reach out to businesses and do that. Um, the Bird S O S pledge, that's, uh, an, or it's our save our sidewalks pledge. Our C E O sent it out on March twenty-sixth and to every dockless provider and no one else has signed on to it yet. Um, what it is, is daily pickup every night. So every, every product gets picked off the street every night. Our network gets shut off at nine P M. currently. Um, and that will de, uh, that timing will, uh, be earlier, once it starts getting darker again. Um, and then they get put back on the streets in an orderly fashion every day, so it's a complete reset every day. Responsible growth, will not increase the number of vehicles in a city unless they're being used on average at least three times per vehicle per day. So if you don't see at least three times the vehicle being used, then we will not add more. Um, currently, the market of across the U S, uh, you have bike share, uh, averaging point seven five to one point two five trips a day. Uh, so we feel three is a pretty nice, uh, solid number. One dollar revenue sharing, uh, starting on day one when we launched in, uh, El Segundo with those thirty scooters, automatically a dollar per scooter per day start being shared. So Santa Monica, one thousand to fifteen hundred scooters on average per day, um, deployed in the city of Santa Monica. So you're looking at about a thousand dollars a day for, for a scooter, um, in the city. So do the math, three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars a year. And that's just our revenue sharing pledge. That's not even getting into permitting costs and all that stuff. So what we're hearing in El Segundo community, went through some reviews in the area that we're, we've gotten so far. I'm so happy that Bird's landing in El Segundo. Can we please have more? Uh, no, 'cause I started with thirty to see, uh, to do a test to see how it worked. Uh, not, so not yet. Uh, Bird is allowing me to explore different neighborhoods. I now go to downtown for lunch when I find a bird nearby. I like bird, but they should not be allowed near schools. I wish there were birds by my work in El Segundo. You need to come up with a better way to encourage proper parking. Can you please give out free helmets to the hotels? That was an interesting one. Can you work and live in El Segundo? I work and live in El Segundo. In the past two weeks, I've saved over a hundred dollars by using Bird to get around town and not calling an Uber. Thank you. Can you make them go faster? Um, no. Uh, uh, we, uh, again, they come at twenty-two miles per hour and we dethrone them to fifteen 'cause that's where we felt, um, talking with cities and stuff like that, so that's where everyone was comfortable with that, that's fifteen miles per hour. And you still like, feel like you're getting from point A to point B. So, the data collected during the El Segundo test. On June twenty-first, Bird launched the morning of the El Segundo Art Walk in the downtown Smoky Hollow communities. Below is the data we collected the past three weeks. So we've had two thousand and thirty-eight unique riders in the El Segundo community. Four thousand six hundred and seventy-eight rides have occurred. Over eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight miles have been traveled, resulting in seven thousand five hundred and seven pounds of C O two emissions avoided in El Segundo. And we do that is so, 'cause we put the car average of what it would admit, admit over one mile. So let's just even say it was a half of that, it would still be a big of a number. Average distance we're seeing El Segundo is one point nine miles. With four, forty-five percent of trips occurring between east and west El Segundo, per context, Metella H Q to downtown El Segundo is one point seven miles. We are an average of three point seven rides per day, per scooter in El Segundo. When we increased the amount of scooters a few times over the period, we saw that number go up to five point six rides per day, per scooter. You're able to rely on the scooter more, um, so you're able to, uh, jump around a little bit more often on them. Working together, we're happy to start down with El Segundo to help with transportation plan, encourage economic development in the community. I know this is one of your, I was reading over your strategic plan and I feel there's lots of things we can help with here on transportation, the future of the east side community, um, all this kind of stuff. So if you wanna work together, customize programs to suit the unique challenges of El Segundo, and work with your staff and, uh, let us helping, let us continue helping you connect the community. Thanks for your time. We'll answer questions later.
Well, again, as was mentioned, uh, Bird launched on the twenty-first. I'm not done in consultation with staff. Unlike, uh, other companies that I know, and Berkman's been working with and all, they're trying to come up with a way to work together on it. It seemed to be more of a beg forgiveness rather than ask for permission approach to things. Um, so we were kind of stuck a little bit when they first dropped, so to speak. So, um, we did work with Tim and we decided to, since you're already here, do an evaluation period, it'll give us time to, you council, to see how you best want us to proceed, um, forward from, from here. First personal observation, observation of my staff, very few people, in fact, I, I personally haven't seen anyone follow all the rules relationship to the scooters. Primarily one is wearing a helmet. Uh, now I know there is legislation pending in Sacramento that would change the operation of these scooters where, uh, wearing a helmet wouldn't be required by adults. Uh, but so far, the law requires wearing of a helmet, it requires you to be off sidewalks. And those are just two violations that have been observed quite frequently. And also, in the comment section of the survey we did, those were things that people complained about in addition to parking the scooters, blocking sidewalks, and then business owners complained about them being adjacent to their doorways and things along those lines. In an effort to help us gauge the, uh, what the community had to say, we did do a survey. Survey Monkey went out and it's probably not a perfect way to, to, can't exactly ga, I mean, we don't know who necessarily is taking it. You're doing it anonymously and there's no way to necessarily control every single person that does it. But I think it was a, it was a pretty good way to, to gauge some, some community input to help provide you guys with information as to, as to what's going on out there. And so, sit with me, use it. So the survey results, and I'll, I'll breeze through them pretty quickly. We had six hundred and sixty-five people respond. Um, after the, the Herald article last week, we did open it back up. Uh, we had got about, I think, nine more responses and that's included in the six hundred and sixty-five. Um, according to this, the majority of the people live in El Segundo that responded. Uh, pretty even on whether they live, uh, or whether they work in El Segundo. Most people have not used the Bird scooter. It actually seems consistent with the data that Tim had. And, um, majority of the people like having scooters available for rental in El Segundo. And on this one, I, I actually included some numbers. So in order to try to make sure that the survey was as valid as we could make it, we went in and, and looked for multiple I P. addresses, see if there was people trying to skew the results somehow. And we did find one instance of, uh, where there was thirty-four responses from the same I P. address. They were all yes in favor of the scooters. Um, very all, very articulate comments being written. And what was interesting is that, uh, it was a fifty-fifty whether they lived or worked in El Segundo. So that looked a little shady. So we pulled those numbers out, but if you feel they're valid, valid, you could throw those thirty-four back into the, the yes numbers there. Um, but just to, it, it just didn't look right. So we pulled them out, but even regardless, it was a forty-seven to thirty-nine percent. Um, I will tell you in the comments, it, in general, people seemed in favor of them, but overwhelmingly with restrictions. That was an overwhelming comment that we got from many of them. A lot of people said, hey, this seems like a reasonable thing to do, but don't like the way they're being used right now. Most people aren't bothered by it. Most people think they're dangerous. Uh, that, that was, uh, have they observed it? No, it was pretty, pretty even split there. And, uh, interesting, this is a little bit different than that other question about whether they should be in here, but, um, most people feel that we should restrict them somehow. And I think that that does lead into the comments that I saw, that we're kind of okay with it, but there needs to be restrictions. And I know that the city attorney's office also has significant concerns with the manner in which these scooters are being used right now, specifically with, uh, encroaching on sidewalks, which is prohibited by our municipal code right now. We've only had nine calls for service, uh, in the two-week span that we surveyed. And, uh, those were primarily people being annoyed by them. Um, that second bullet point, we reached out to Santa Monica and I'm not here to speak officially for them or, or to give official numbers on their behalf. Uh, but something to be cognizant of is, uh, since the beginning of the year, they've had well over a hundred injury traffic accidents involving scooters. And they only track injuries, they don't track non-injury accidents. Uh, they've also taken enforcement posture on them. And, uh, year to date, there are over a thousand citations for, for scooter violations. So that's, uh, again, I'm not, that's not their official numbers that they're necessarily putting out, but we just wanted to get some information to see how they were adapting with it over there. We have not taken a enforcement stance as of yet. That might change after this evening. Uh, but with traffic, um, problems, you always try to, you engineer the problem, you educate people, and then really enforcement is the last tool that we like to use. We've already started an enforcement campaign, uh, but we are ready to start, I'm sorry, we've already started an education campaign. We are ready to start an enforcement campaign moving forward. And now I will turn it over to Paul.
Good evening, uh, council members, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, just gonna give you a brief background. Uh, uh, the Bird scooters are part of a, sort of a national or international trend in transportation, and transportation is evolving. Uh, just to give you a little perspective, uh, Uber and Lyft, those ride-sharing, uh, apps and services started in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. And, uh, now they're operating in, uh, several countries throughout the world. Um, I, around the same time, around two thousand and ten is when cities started to, uh, implement, um, uh, bike share, uh, programs. And, uh, those have gone through sort of an exponential growth. Uh, between, uh, two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen, according to data from the National Association of City Transportation Officials, uh, there was, uh, sort of an explosion, uh, from, from zero in two thousand and ten to, uh, sixty cities having programs, you know, offering, uh, bike share. And, uh, some of their numbers talk about the, the numbers of trips that were taken using, um, bike share vehicles. Um, and in two thousand and sixteen, it was around eighty-eight million trips with twenty-six million of those trips only in two thousand and sixteen. So that kind of gives you a sense of that exponential growth in the, in this field. Um, that same trend, um, has, uh, reached our region, so cities in the area, um, Santa Monica, Los Angeles, West Hollywood, Beverly Hills, Long Beach, and others around us have, uh, implemented bike share programs. Uh, those programs are based on, um, sort of docking station systems where bikes are parked at, uh, essentially a heavy-duty bike racks, you know? Uh, but, uh, since those programs have been implemented, there have been, uh, other trends such as, uh, the use of, uh, G P S tracking, so which has enabled, um, bikes and scooters to be used without a docking station. Um, they can be used through an app and they can be tracked, uh, easily. And in addition, um, the, um, the bike share programs have started to evolve also to, uh, to, uh, provide, uh, electric bikes or electric assist bikes. So those two trends, uh, together have sort of added, sort of, this, uh, fire to this phenomenon. So, um, those, uh, cities that I mentioned earlier that, uh, had their own programs, those dock-based, uh, systems, are now, uh, looking into and moving towards supplementing their systems with, uh, dockless systems for bicycles and then more recently, uh, scooters. Um, just within the last few months, uh, the city of Los Angeles, Santa Monica, and Culver City decided to go ahead with, uh, pilot programs to allow, uh, scooters and elec, and, and, uh, dockless bikes to, to start operating in their cities. Uh, so, as you can see, there are a lot of opportunities and, uh, Tim from Bird also mentioned some of those things in this, uh, field. Uh, there's a lot of benefits, environmental benefits, potential traffic benefits, uh, health benefits from using active transportation. Uh, especially in our city, uh, where we have three, uh, green line stations on the east part of town. Uh, there's a lot of potential for people to start or end their commute trips, you know, to, to the green line stations. It'll help people to get to those stations easily, you know? Uh, if they're coming from outside of town, you know, they can get to a station and then when they get to our city, they can jump on, uh, a bike or a scooter and then make the last sort of half-mile or mile, uh, ride to their work. So that's, uh, there's a lot of potential there. But as has been mentioned, there's also a lot of challenges with these, uh, uh, shared bikes or shared scooters. Uh, the primary ones have to do with, uh, safety, as has been mentioned, and with, uh, parking or their abandonment, you know? I won't go into those details. Um, as, uh, the chief mentioned, uh, I and some other staff from the city have been working with, uh, neighboring cities in the South Bay area. And more recently, the South Bay C O G has been involved as, as well in trying to come up with, uh, potentially, uh, a common regu, regulatory framework for all these types of services. And we've been making a lot of progress in that regard. And, um, we're getting to a point where we can kind of set up some sort of a common, uh, framework. And, uh, that will be along the same lines as, uh, what some of the neighboring cities have implemented, Los Angeles, Culver City, Santa Monica. And it actually, it will also incorporate some of the same aspects of the operation of Bird that, uh, Tim mentioned earlier. So just to give you a sense of what are the primary components, uh, that would go into potential regulations, uh, parking, so defining sort of the proper parking locations and improper parking locations in cities. Uh, several cities have, uh, have done that in their programs and there's various ways to regulate whether you want to be strict or not. Uh, regulating the fleet size, uh, how many bicycles or scooters each operator can have in a city. And, um, the decisions on that, um, vary depending on the city specifics and size. Minimums are usually a good idea to ensure that there, there are enough vehicles in a city so that can be used reliably. And maximums, of course, uh, help to kind of reduce any negative impacts associated with their use. Uh, regulations on operation and maintenance, so for example, there could be requirements such as, um, um, minimum response times, uh, when there are requests for removing a bicycle or a scooter from a sidewalk or from an alley. Uh, also, there could be requirements such as, uh, communication protocols or making, uh, the company's, uh, commi, um, contact information available to all the users and the public if there are concerns, questions, complaints. Uh, also, there could be requirements regarding, uh, regular maintenance of vehicles, um, uh, submittal of, uh, maintenance logs to the city to make sure that the, the vehicles are operable and in good working order. Safety regulations, of course, and standards, uh, would go into place. And other cities have done that as well, such as, you know, using helmets, no riding on the street, um, yielding to pedestrians and so forth. Uh, another area which has, uh, kind of a lot of potential is, uh, data, uh, data sharing. Um, Tim mentioned in his presentations are the number of trips or average daily trips, average length of trip. A lot of cities have required, uh, bike share companies and, uh, similar companies to share data on a regular basis. And that helps, uh, cities to evaluate how the program is going, evaluate whether there is needs to change, whether there needs to be more or fewer vehicles in town, or perhaps more parking areas so that the people can find places to, uh, leave those vehicles. And there's a number of, another number of, uh, areas where cities have kind of regulated, set rules, uh, including enforcement. So when it comes to enforcement, the chief mentioned that some cities take that enforcement posture where they, um, cite riders for not obeying the rules of the law, of the road. In addition to that, there's sort of enforcement mechanisms in, uh, other cities' programs where, uh, if, uh, the operator does not, uh, follow the, the rules of their permit or the, uh, required data sharing or the operations, if their response times are, are slow, uh, then, then can be penalized, their permits could be revoked, for instance. So I just wanted to give you just a general sense of what goes into those, uh, programs. And we've been working with South Bay cities and, uh, the C O G to see if we can come up with a, uh, potential, uh, pilot program or framework to bring back to you. Uh, so that kind of concludes my part of the presentation. Uh, this, the council and the city has multiple options. It could do nothing, you know, and, and I would let, uh, companies come and operate. Few cities have elected that option. Uh, it could, uh, take an enforcement posture citing people that It could take an enforcement posture, citing people that violate the rules of the law. It could go with a pilot program to test things out for some time. Or it could potentially ban these vehicles or these services outright.
I might just, from a legal perspective, one of the concerns that was expressed in the staff report, is just to reiterate is the city averages, and this has been worked on, but any time we generally have, the city generally has about three active sidewalk lawsuits, I'll call them, trip and falls, those kind of things, and they're not cheap. So my, you know, the concern my office has is if someone trips over one of these or they're blocking a sidewalk and it's needed for ADA access. There are lots of ADA lawsuits out there, some of them not all that well-intentioned, but these are the things can get real expensive real quick. The city's deductible, if you will, on its insurance is $700,000. And if we get someone that's significantly injured, that's a lot of money. And that comes out of the city's general fund. For every time that we get sued, that first $700,000 comes out of the city's general fund. Now, not all lawsuits cost $700,000, but if there's any significant injury, it doesn't take very, it gets there really fast. So my recommendation at a minimum would be, if they're going to be allowed to encroach on the sidewalks, is to make them provide insurance that covers the city.
Is that all?
Yes, ma'am, I'm done.
Okay.
We're all available for questions now.
Well, thank you, thank you, Chief Whalen and Paul. Thank you for giving the information. And before I open up for comments from the council, I do want to clarify for everybody that the, we do, this company did not obtain a business permit, and we are not in a revenue-sharing program with them at this moment, correct?
We have no agreement with them at this time.
There's no agreement, there's, because I know in Tim's presentation, it was that we were receiving a dollar per ride, but we're not, we're not receiving anything at this moment. So I would like to open up to comments from the council.
Couple of questions for the chief, I think, first off. I know you and I had traded some emails on this, because I was just trying to understand the concept. And so bird scooters are not viewed the same way as an electric bike is viewed, correct? They're not classified the same.
Correct.
But one can make the argument that they're very similar in the sense that they are a motorized vehicle. Yeah? Am I, I'm over eighteen, am I required to wear a helmet on an electric bike?
No.
Okay.
Depending on the type of electric bike, but the kind you're referring to, no.
Okay. When we talk about like citations and enforcing the law, I want to be careful how I present this, but there are thousands of laws on the books, correct? Are all of those laws enforced at all times? Okay, so I just kind of want to lay this out there because it's, you know, I don't want to look at things in black and white when the world is evolving faster than we can draft the black and white. If I leave my bicycle on the sidewalk, and I didn't lock it up, I didn't use a bike rack, I just left it on the sidewalk, or maybe I locked it to itself, and somebody trips over it, could they sue the city?
Probably not in that circumstance, but that's a different circumstance than this.
What if my bicycle's in the right-of-way?
Well, this is a company that come in, it's come in a business. They're dumping these on our sidewalk. In fact, at this point, we've told them, okay.
I just, I mean, we live in a, we live in a world where anyone can sue anyone for anything.
Odds go up a lot when there's law.
Yes, no, we are adding to the probability to it by allowing these in the right-of-way. I'm just asking a simple question.
No, I would think we're, unless we knowingly leave it there for several days or a long period of time, and we see it's a hazard. Yeah, we do have an obligation to clean up hazards on our sidewalks. If we left it there, after a while, we could become potentially liable for it. In this situation, my concern's greater because we're telling them it's okay to put these out there, where we're not telling other people it's okay. We have bike racks, we have places for them to be. These are just, but wherever. Again, my only concern is, I'm sure they have insurance. And I'm pretty certain they could provide us, make us an additional insured without a lot of cost.
So the city's concern is really safety and liability and educating the people. Don't ride on the sidewalk, don't cause a nuisance, don't leave the birds on the sidewalk and block the right-of-way because someone could trip on it or they become a nuisance. That's the main concern from us as a municipality.
Well, that's just, that's a concern, but we also have a responsibility to be fiscally focused?
No, I know, I just want to make sure that I understand from like a city standpoint what our major concerns are, because if we're going to try to work through the evolution of these different transportation options, and I just want to, I want to get a basis for where I'm standing to set my lens as my city steward, you know, of that city concern. Right? What is our concern? How are we going to operate moving forward?
Well, we look. May I, council person, oh, forgive me. Just wanted to mention that there's also sort of the other potential uses of the sidewalk that you want to, that you may want to consider. So space for people to walk, space for businesses to display their products perhaps. And those businesses typically have to get encroachment permits to do that. You know, other uses for the sidewalk as well.
So to that point, you know, for anybody to use our sidewalks as a business or any of our public land as a business, we charge. And we have permits, and they have to get encroachment permits, and there's a cost and fee associated to that. This company's come in and put their business in our property and have not paid a penny and have not, and didn't come to us asking to pay money.
I'm not going to argue that point, I guess I'm looking forward. It's my understanding, just from my time on like the planning commission, sorry, chief, you're gonna have to, you can sit down, because I don't have another question for you yet, but it's more of a staff question, and Paul's in planning, but a business on Main Street. A business on Main Street is allowed to encroach into the setback thirty inches with like a patio dining or a bench seat or something along those lines, correct?
I think that's the current practice, I think according to our Public Works Department, when it comes to outdoor dining.
Got it.
But they are already paying the business tax and the license.
Just walk down this road with me for a second. So I want to, because those businesses then have a right to that thirty-inch encroachment if they want to have that right, yes?
It's not an absolute right. It's permissive on our part, they get encroachment permit, they provide insurance. We've had a couple of trip and falls through the years, and their insurance has been quite helpful.
Okay.
I mean, it's been fortunate that anybody gets injured, but they're running a business, and so if someone gets injured, their insurance company pays.
I guess this line of questions that I'm asking, I'm trying to get to a place where we're hearing answers that will lead us to, like, Bird is the company that's here today, but I believe I read an article that Lime is partnering with Uber.
Yeah.
Does Uber have a business license in El Segundo? I mean, same idea, right? Same company came in, they did what they wanted, they asked for forgiveness. So Bird may be what we're talking about tonight, but it's really just this other option of transportation that is, it's coming. So how are we as a municipality going to evolve with it? And/or are we going to say, no, absolutely not, this mode of transportation is not allowed in our town? So just so you understand where I'm coming from. But, so I had that question. I have a question for Tim, if you can step up to the mic. Talk to me about this concept of regulating where someone can leave the scooter after they've completed their ride.
Sure. So we're currently exploring different options on parking a scooter where you would end your ride. So what we're seeing, let's say in the city of Memphis, where we entered an interim operating agreement with the city of Memphis, is they deployed a stencil parking in their downtown corridor around bike racks that were unused. So for instance, you guys have a lot of bike racks on your main street. We could stencil and chalk in and pay for all that ourselves, and we're happy to pay all that. And what it does is, we have people take pictures of it when they end their ride, because already we're making people do that on the end of every ride. And it makes you sort of think of where you're parking your scooter. And if they do it, we give them a dollar Bird credit, so it incentivizes them to do that good behavior on safety and parking them in places where we want them to be parked, in high-trafficed areas. And areas in a neighborhood or a house or something like that or a sidewalk, what we're really encouraging is when our parking feature pops up when you end your ride, it has a few things on there, it says, do not block the sidewalk. You can be fined for, like, it has all that stuff in there. And it says, are you blocking ADA access, are you doing this? And it makes people think before they take that picture, that could be moved to the side, and that they're putting next to a tree or putting it next to like. And we're, again, we're revolving that app and making safety tutorials on that stuff and telling people where we want them parked at. And it's worked really well, especially in Santa Monica and in Memphis and other cities that we, in Austin, where we've rolled out that feature. And it'll be going system-wide next week as well, so.
Are they notified if they're trying to leave it in a zone that is a no-drop zone? Are they warned on the app, like, you are not allowed to leave the scooter there?
Yep, if it's a no-drop zone, you can't end your ride. So you have to, so you have to remove your product. Like, let's say we were to cross off, you know, a couple blocks radius of some area where you guys don't want them being left at. It wouldn't allow you to end your ride until you move the product, until you end your ride at a location where we want it dropped off at.
Is your technology advanced enough to say you had like a ten-foot circle in certain spots?
Yeah, that's why we're doing the photo thing right now. It's just the technology isn't there to pinpoint it exactly where we want it at. So that's why we're going through the photos and incentivizing people to drop it off at those locations. But again, our engineers are working on all that stuff, so eventually, probably down the line, I would see that happening. But what we're seeing really with the parking is, when we added that feature in the parking app, it happened in San Francisco, we saw user behavior really change on that stuff. And again, the PSAs that your police department did and Santa Monica Police Department did that stuff, I think it had four thousand video reviews on your video already. Those kind of things help people understand where they're allowed to park it at and where they're supposed to do it at. It's just user education, and we're willing to spend money on that. And just on the, on the money side, on the dollar revenue sharing, I just want to mention that there's no mechanism in place for us to give you that money, but we're happy to pay that. We applied for a business license before we dropped in El Segundo. Haven't heard back from the business license department. So we're happy to pay all those fees and permitting, whatever your stuff. Culver City entered into interim operating agreement with us, and we're paying all those fees in advance before we continue expanding there. Just wanted to answer that.
Got it, thank you.
Tim, ma'am, before you jump down, can I ask, do you know what the median distance traveled is? Any of the average? And I think that for a lot of us who are focused on the residential zones may not have a direct window into where these things may be used in either the majority or plurality. And with the average distance being that long, I suspect we're seeing more of them used on the corridor, in the industrial corridor east of PCH than some of us may suspect. So do you know what that median is, perchance?
I don't know on the El Segundo network.
Because 1.7 is a really long way in El Segundo unless you're doing laps.
Right, yeah. You know, I was really curious to sort of see on the economic, you know, and I really did some research on the economic development side that you guys are having trouble with connecting east, all the businesses that population increases and trying to get them to Main Street and seeing if I could bridge that gap and then bridge also the metro gap that I saw. And what I've seen is, I see a lot of rides happening in that area. I do see a lot of neighborhood activity happening. I don't know exactly what that distance is, but I did see a lot of rides happening in the neighborhoods as well. It wasn't just connecting east and west. Like I said, it was forty-five percent was east and west connection. But I did see a lot of neighborhood activity happening as well. And a lot of beach activity, obviously, right? Going down to Manhattan or going to Hermosa, they go fifteen miles on a full charge. So you can go all the way down to Rancho Palabridas if you want to.
So a, someone who's taking that trip, who is transiting all the way down to Hermosa, would that be factored into our data because it went through El Segundo?
So that's. Because it started in El Segundo, so those scooters are only in El Segundo's network. But again, as I think Paul mentioned earlier, we are LA, we are okay to operate in LA with Councilmember Bonin and Councilmember Carretta's office. So in those districts where we are operating, so apply to all those communities up there. Then LA regulations will be coming next month to city council. And they get on the data stuff, we're already sharing data with cities on that stuff and showing them heat maps of where those rides are happening. So it helps you in your junior transportation planning and putting your bicycle lane network in and stuff like that. That's the only thing we ask on our revenue sharing is, we're just asking for shared infrastructure to go towards that, but wherever you guys want to send that money at is up to you guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Don, do you have any questions?
May I ask a question to Chief Whalen? Chief, if you are doing an informational stop and you see someone who appears to be unlikely to be eighteen on it, who is cited in that? If, let's say it was an enforcement stop, and it wasn't just informational. You pull someone over, turns out they're fifteen, they're on a bird scooter. Who ultimately is at fault there? Is it the vendor or bending to someone who is ineligible to have that? Or is it the rider, or is it both?
The rider would be the one receiving the citation for violating the vehicle code. I don't know that criminally, the vendor would be liable for that. I don't know if the city attorney might civilly, if that vendor rented to them and they somehow got into a problem, I'm not sure on that. But criminally, if you'll call it criminally, citation would go to the rider of the scooter.
Is it a civil citation if someone, if a fifteen-year-old buys a pack of cigarettes? Or is that a criminal citation?
That's criminal.
That's criminal?
It's a misdemeanor, but it's criminal.
But this would be, this is different in, because it's different codes?
It would be a criminal misdemeanor, it's violating the vehicle code. And, correct me if I'm wrong, it's criminal misdemeanor.
Infraction.
Infraction. And then I don't think the, unless the company is knowingly or negligently making them available to minors, then I don't think they'd have a liability. Now, if they get into an accident, then everyone will get sued. But I don't think they can be cited unless they be like an owner of a car, who turned over your keys to an unlicensed fifteen-year-old and, you know, knowingly you're curating and bedding them or conspiring to commit a crime at that point, albeit a misdemeanor, but still.
And in the case of the cigarettes, there's actually laws on the books that specifically prohibit you from furnishing a tobacco product to a minor. Likewise, there's laws on the books that prohibit a minor from possessing. In this case, we only have one half the equation. We have the half of the equation where it outlaws you not necessarily providing.
Very well, thank you.
Do we know much about this legislature, this bill?
Yeah, I understand that it's being circulated, I haven't looked at the status lately.
It passed unanimously out of the assembly, seventy-two to zero. Went to the Senate side, passed unanimously out of Transportation Committee at the Senate, and it's going to Senate floor next week.
Is it the helmet law?
That's the helmet law.
It's just helmets?
Helmets and roads. Currently, you're not supposed to operate on roads over thirty-five miles per hour or higher. That will be increased to, you won't be able to operate on roads of forty-five miles per hour higher. I believe that's the right.
Did they use this opportunity to lump like electric bicycles into the same conversation?
Correct, exactly. It's to basically mirror the regulations of electric bicycles that go, actually, electric bicycles go between twenty, twenty-five miles per hour, but we feel that that's the closest mere definition that we want. Cities are asking, we're asking us for regulation, state regulations to clarify what that is. And so, and I mean, it's going really well, so. And the city of Santa Monica is actually opposed to the bill. They're now in support of it because we did some changes on it and helped them, so. And then also, I just want to point out, identification, the city remains responsible for all that stuff. I can add you guys to our charts tomorrow morning, and those issues would be resolved. We're asking, so, and you see we're operating, we'll make that happen tomorrow morning.
Don, do you have any?
I'm comparing the convenience of having these available in the environment against the nuisance of having them available in the environment. And reflecting on how unprofessional this company rolls, no pun intended, I think our best conclusion here, my conclusion, is they should be banned from the city of El Segundo. Thank you.
So from my perspective, I feel, you know, it's our responsibility to provide a service for our residents, safety, make sure, you know, we have safety clauses and we're fiscally focused. What I would like to see, I know that Bird is just one of many companies that are out there, and I would like to see almost an RFP go out to companies to see what they're willing to, how they're willing to partner with us. I mean, today, tonight, you're saying that you're, oh, we're willing to do this, we're willing to this, but, you know, you just dropped your scooters here, and after the fact, now you're saying you're willing to partner with us and give us money and indemnify us, but that was never, unless... But that was never, unless we were asking for it, you would never would have, she, that should have been part of the process in the beginning. As a true partner, you come in and you you give out, you pro- you provide a business partnership and. Provide that upfront and I just feel like we were, this has been thrown on us. Um, so I would like to see, me personally, I'm not opposed to having electric scooters or electric bikes or bike sharing. But I would like to see it structured in a manner that is the best interest for everybody and that it's, we're fiscally um. We're gaining fiscally from it. You know, you're saying that we haven't incurred, there's no cost to us, but there hasn't cost, there is cost to us. Our. Chief of we, chief of police has spent time on it, our planning department has spent time in it, our city manager has spent time on it, we have spent time on it. We've received hundreds of emails, that's time, all that time is money. And I just feel that um we need to approach this as a as a business. And you're, it's it's a business that's using our public land that if any other company was asking to use that, we would be charging for it. So I personally would like to go out to an RFP to other companies to see what companies are willing to do with to for us as a partner. And I put that out there as a proposal.
I am, I am of of two minds on this a bit. Uh, on the one hand, my my naked defense of capitalism is that. You know, boorish behavior doesn't make it illegal. Um, you know, I I I, there's plenty of of organizations that I may not think are great, you know? The Philadelphia Eagles might be one, but they shouldn't be kicked out of professional football. But to a degree, there's an element of this, right, that I I think that the observation that a lot of us have is not, and I will mix my metaphors, this is my great custom. But it's it's a little bit like the Q-tip box that says, do not stick this in ear, right? We see a presentation that tells us that you've got to be over eighteen. Don't run on the sidewalks and ride a helmet. And my uniform experience with this is summer break kids. Riding down sidewalks without helmets, usually with two or three people on the scooter. So which which the sense of that that I gather, and granted, I'm not, I I'm not in the industrial quarter. Where it it would appear that a lot of rides that are going down the beach must be taking place to get these these longer distances. Uh, it appeared there is a utility to it because people are taking plenty of rides. Uh, but I think the controls that people are concerned about and the controls that certainly many of us are stopped all the time on the street to hear. Particularly from really, really unhappy merchants about them being in front of their stores. Are are things that if an organization is going to operate and operate responsibly, you know, it's incumbent upon them to adopt those things. And I think the the visual noise of seeing them cluttering things as well as people's issues with them in the right of way. Are things that it sounds like there's solutions out there for, uh and and those are business decisions, some of them, whether you want to charge people deposit. And if they leave it in the right place, they get the deposit back or however you guys do it, uh that is not on or incumbent on us to make those decisions. But responsible operators certainly need to answer the mail on how you're controlling the use of these things. Because clearly people who are not intended to be riding them and clearly behaviors that are not supposed to be being done about where they're being left. Are being done all the time. And that's, I think, where some of the animus we hear in the community comes from. For people who would be more than happy, I mean, I I I'll bring up my green line example, as a green line rider, I'm sure there would have been times when it was raining. That I would have been elated to have a scooter there to get home as opposed to hoofing it, right? So there are things, there's a utility to it, that if we're going to approach these things and the multimodal transportation of the future. Uh, we can set regulations and whether that's in the place of an RFP or or just the way that we want people to come in and park things. We we do it in some other manner. There's ways that we can box it around it to make it able for people to live without being bombarded on their sidewalk by fifteen year olds screaming. Um, in a way that makes sense. So, you know, I think that that the very short version is. I share the reflexive frustration with the way this has been rolled out and the way we are currently experiencing. But I also share a bit of the hope of the future that there is a utility for these items and there has to be a way to capture that. I need someone smart to craft that.
Scott?
I think that um I think it would be very short sighted for us to not try to think about the economic development aspect. Think about the fact that we just voted down the concept of studying anything east of Sepulveda. Tonight, right? And we approved a cafe in an area. That is not within one mile of any kind of eatery and such. And one of the main questions asked when trying to earn this seat was. What are we gonna do to try to drive traffic to Main Street because Main Street is dying? You know, and I think that it would be very short sighted for us to just say, nope, we're moving on. I think that uh the future's here, it's happening. I mean, it it is, it's just, it's happening. We may not, some of us don't like it, some of us really like it, some of us don't seem to have an opinion on it. You know, I think that it's, as Chris said, incumbent upon us though to decide, how do we want to regulate? How do we want to educate and how do we want to move forward with this? Because if we kick them out, lime's coming next. And then we try to kick them out and then we're gonna enter into an agreement with bicycles and we're gonna have trouble where people leave bicycles. And it's, it's this evolution of transportation as we know it. And if we just have this no. You know, stance on it, then I think we're, we are representing some of our constituents in that stance. And I think we are leaving out in the cold the entire other half of our constituents. So I think it's important. I think we just, we need to, we we've had a glimpse into what it is. There's clearly a demand. There's been outreach. I don't, I don't, I I think as Paul said, one of the options was a pilot program. Run a pilot program. If it seems to work, then it works and we keep it. If there is an evolution in the education. Like anything else, we like when they, I never had the experience wearing a helmet as a kid. It was not law. I think I was sixteen, the year that it was passed, that if you were under the age of sixteen, you had to wear a helmet on a bicycle and I loved it. But I remember it, you had to wear a helmet as to skateboard until you were eighteen and I remember not skateboarding anymore. I was like, I don't want to wear a helmet, not gonna do it. But it was a learned thing. Now every kid has a helmet and it's just normal, right? So it's the evolution, it's the learning. And I think we're in that and so, I mean, I'm. I'm more of a proponent to go with the option that Paul mentioned, which is more of a pilot program to see where it goes and us have. Our finger on the ripcord, so to speak, to say, hey, this is going in the wrong direction, we want to end it now, rather than just say, no, go away. And then deal with this same conversation with another company that comes in and just asks for forgiveness.
So Greg, at this juncture, uh you're looking for us for direction from the council?
Yeah, I I I think your options are to either direct staff to begin enforcement. Um, to consider a pilot program with some limited period of time and some controls in place to address some of these concerns. Um, I don't think continuing to do what we're doing right now is a good option. It was a good evaluation period. I'm glad we did it. We got a lot of good information. Um, but there are some concerns out there that should be addressed or we shouldn't do this. And you know, quite honestly, from staff's perspective, this is bu- this is both an opportunity and a problem. We, we like creative transportation. Um, this, this company provides it. There is some component of our community that enjoys having it here, but they have created issues for us. And we haven't, the issues from our perspective, from staff's perspective, has kind of been dumped on us to resolve. We'd like Bird to solve those problems. So if if you were to extend this or create a pilot program, I would like Bird to come back. With real specific answers to addressing some of these concerns in a very specific period of time. I'd, I I liked hearing that they're willing to insure us tomorrow. That that addresses one concern. How are they gonna address the parking issue? How are they gonna address how people use these? Um, I think most of us probably agree that that giving people transportation options, options is a good thing, but how do we control these side effects? I don't think it should be up to the chief of police and his people to have to enforce this. That's, that's not something that we really need right now to add to our our issues.
It appears to me that there's four elements, right? There's parking, liability, volume. Three of those are owned by Bird and fourth is enforcement, right? Cause Bird, the technology doesn't hit the brakes and make the thing catch on fire if it goes on a sidewalk. And it it doesn't, right? And it and you can't, and and there is no law against being sixteen, um nor necessarily should there be. But those things will be, are the one thing that does fall into irrespective of what the mode of transportation is, whether someone's on a skateboard, a bicycle. Or a rented scooter, them being on the sidewalk and operating in an unsafe manner is the one piece that we do. So whatever step we take going forward, if it's something that allows uh them to continue operation in the city. Of those four elements, there's three that they have to answer, right? Parking, liability and the volume of scooters on the streets. And the fourth one is the enforcement of how that we allow it to operate. So that's just a part of it, though, that's no different than any other infuriating thing that people do on a sidewalk or roll through a stop sign or something like that.
Okay, so are we, um, I think there's a consensus to form some type of pilot program. Um, I know, Don, you're a, you're a no, but I think the other.
I'm just glad you're still listening.
Scott and Chris and I uh would like to ask to look into a pilot program. Um, to Chris's point, we need Bird to come back to us with some parameters as far as around parking. Um, volume and liability. I think the liability needs to be addressed in the first and utmost. Needs to be addressed right away. I also, um, the fiscal responsibility of them and and the fees that we're gonna charge. As far as using our space, we need to look at that um. Up that option. And I just don't want the cookie cutter a dollar, whatever. I mean, they need to come with at the proposal. Because, you know, we will be looking at other companies. If this is something we want to embark on, we could be look, going, approaching other companies. And if they're only gonna guess a dollar, maybe we'll get two dollars from somebody else. So I I really want to look at this as as a business partnership. And I expect Bird to make amends for dumping this on us and asking forgiveness. And that forgiveness better come financial, in a financial form. Um, so I think we should do, how long of a period would you like to do a pilot program for? What's the?
Is there any case history to what a pilot program for something else in our, with, for for El Segundo and and and? Is or or in the area in the South Bay that people are looking at?
Well, uh, in the uh, the the cities around us, Los Angeles, Santa Monica, Culver City, they're looking at uh. One year to eighteen months in length.
That's a long, that's a long pilot.
And then also I wanted to mention that uh this is one company and I wanted to on, let you know that we have been talking to other. Bike share companies over the last few months. And we've also been working with other cities in the area. On coming up with some sort of framework for regulations. So I wanted to understand if you only wanted staff to think of, to work with. Bird or to make this uh uh a, something open to other potential users who've been uh working with us. And that would be our recommendation to potentially allow multiple um.
Yeah, well, I I would suspect it would be something that would cover any, any organization that's gonna license to do business here. But I think the the the, you know, the the big, the parking piece, though, and I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, if we're gonna do this, I would like designated parking spots. Not, I promise to leave it this far away from the curb, but like no, much like if you remember something like Memphis, there's going to be a designated parking spot where it can go. Uh, and not a designated parking process, but a parking locations that they have to designate.
I think even if that is established, it's gonna be something that's learned over a time period, so. Um, like I know, for instance, uh, a business owner in town sent me an email and said, I don't want these in front of my business. And I forwarded the email to Bird and said, here, you know, here's some feedback for you. And uh I got a response immediately saying that the nest would, it would be like a no nest zone near that business. So I think it's important also that we do some sort of outreach to the businesses to let them know, like if you do not want these in front of your business. Those nest locations can be removed. Like I know every time I walk to my office on Main Street, there's three out, right out in front. I never said, yeah, put them there. You know, but if I don't want them there, I know that I can reach out to Bird and say, I don't want those parked there tomorrow morning and they won't be. You know, so, but I think where people are gonna drop them, it's gonna have to be a learned thing.
Well, but there's already a process in place. There's already cities that are designating those those places around bike racks. And however that's structured, if they rent our bike rack to put, to use for their birds, that, I mean, that's a commercial decision that's incumbent upon them to come forward with. But I just think that if we're gonna develop regulations around this, then that's something that I think my experience with the constituents of the town is that. They want them left in a designated spot, uh, or they would be happy to undesignate them. So.
So I I think just to move this along, could I suggest that we require Bird to obtain, provide insurance this week? Obtain an encroachment permit within thirty days. That encroachment permit would be valid for s- for six months from the date it's issued. We're not gonna get it perfect probably the first time, but we can start addressing some of these concerns and that six month period would would allow us time to. To get better at this and to find out what our options are.
And that encroachment permit would be for specific spots on the ground, not a general, I will leave it somewhere.
Well, I think it'd be to allow use of parking of these on public property. We could probably build into a a condition to that permit that the city can designate areas where they aren't allowed to be parked based on complaints. I don't know that we can, I don't know that their business model really allows us to designate specific locations where they can be left. Uh, but we could certainly address the complaints as they come in and ask Bird to stop leaving them there.
I think in the downtown zone, I think it's fair to designate spots where they could. You know, it it should be a a an affirmative, positive, it goes here.
There's plenty of unused bike racks.
Yeah, let's.
All right, staff's telling me that they think they can, they can do that.
And then Paul, just for clarification, you said you were in conversation with um other companies. Was there another company that we were working with that was doing, doing the right thing and now they're basically out in the cold?
Well, uh, we were first approached by a company uh less than a year ago, but around summertime last year. With a kind of an idea about starting a pilot program in town for.
For bikes?
Yeah. Uh, but because there are so many other operators, uh, we started to do our research on other companies. So we contacted other companies to understand what types of services they provide, how they operate. We've also talked to other cities about their experiences and we've started to share information. And um, we've, we've been working with other cities and the COG recently to try to come up with a kind of a common approach. And one of the issues which is kind of interesting is uh. Being able to allow these companies and their vehicles to go from one city to the other. Um, because typically, you know, you issue a permit in your city, but that doesn't mean that they're allowed to go somewhere else. So if, for instance, you're in, in uh Els- in El Segundo on on Rosecrans Avenue, you know, on the north side. You know, and you wanna go to lunch across the street using a bike or a, you know, scooter. Technically, if we are permitting them and they're not permitted in in Manhattan Beach, they can't go there. So that's why we're working with the other cities, so that we can see if we can kind of coordinate and maybe uh reach some sort of agreement. Where they can cross boundaries and find some way to kind of rebalance the bikes at the end of the day and so forth, so. That's part of the reason why we were trying to think, work with other cities and come up with a kind of a. A bigger approach rather than a single company.
Right. So is six months too long, too little?
I think practically speaking, end of summer, we're gonna see probably a dip in use, right? And or who the users are will change. It'll be those people in creative office and and whatnot. I think six months is plenty to give us the data to get us to be able to, I mean, we meet twice a month. If things are going off the rails by August, our next meeting, we can pull the plug on the whole thing.
Right.
I mean, we are not emboldened to this six months, are we?
We can draft the encroachment, excuse me, we can gra- draft the encroachment permit so that. For some termination period, fifteen, thirty days, maybe seven days. So, now Santa Monica has a little more experience and uh good and bad, but we're. Can make it a shorter time period if the council wants. It doesn't have to be thirty.
I think thirty is reasonable. I mean, that that that's the reaffirmation and and if, if when the fifteen year olds are off the street using them and the business drives up. Then the the business will tell them the volume determines not to work, not to work here. I mean, that's, it's, you know, I, but I could be totally wrong. And there's a robust bunch of thirty five year olds driving around, you know, Nash Avenue on them.
I did have one question, cause you had said, uh, Tim, you had said that you need the driver's license to scan for the initial one, but once. So if I'm like an adult and I have a driver's since I'm over eighteen, obviously, I scan it and I create my count.
It's your kid.
Now that's how the kids are driving.
Yeah, so we're seeing that happen. I just wrote down that note actually, just so I can make sure to point that out. Um, so we're seeing stolen IDs, uh parents scanning their driver's license for kids to ride, fake IDs. Um, and so what we're doing is, I don't know, California is really not a new uh uh real ID. Um, so we're trying to think of features like that. Also, the engineers are working on more preventative measures on driver's license scan. We do evolve rides. So we're increasing that technology, so it's really hard to understand that.
Do you have to scan your your ID every time you ride?
You do not, but um what. You do not. But what we are looking into is making it so that every maybe ten rides or every fifteen rides, you have to scan it. So if your kid is out, you already scanned it, their app once, right? But then they're trying to leave the movie theater and they're on their tenth ride or something like that, it asks for their driver's license again. Your kid no longer has that driver's license, you guys, you use that, your driver's license?
So if I'm, if I'm with my kid and I see two scooters there and I scan one in and I scan the second one in, you can't?
Can't do that. It, it's only one driver's license to put in an account. And our, our, our software recognizes that.
So I couldn't book four of them at the same time?
Can't. Only one scooter per, a driver's license account.
Don't go away. I'm going to pick your brain now because you know your company so well, which means you likely know your competitors very well.
Of course.
Your competitors are the other scooter rental companies on the market. Do they have very similar software tiers?
I don't know about their software. They just think, they just add the driver's license scan. Lime is the main competitor for scooters. Santa Monica requested that, their permit's going to be revoked if they didn't add a driver's license scan. They came up with a driver's license scan on their app within three days.
Is there anything that Santa Monica asked of you that we are completely blind to right now, that we're missing?
I would say, and I would hold our feet to the fire and other companies as well, user education, safety messaging, making us pay for ad space on Know the Law, doing PSAs in your community. You know, I saw the shuttle going up and down from, for the lunch, lunch shuttle or something. There's ad space on those things. We can, you know, that's revenue that can go into the city, doing those kinds of things and making us pay for that. It's fine. Safety helmet giveaways, we give out free helmets. I think every company that operates here should have to give out a free helmet. Our CEO is committed to even giving out free helmets after the law passes. So if you, you download their app and you take one ride, no, actually, you don't have to take a ride anymore. You can just request a free helmet, just start downloading our app now. You just have to pay.
Where you ship, you ship the app to the, the helmet to them?
Hmm, for two dollars and forty-nine cents. It's about a fifty-five dollar helmet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Put something in that conditional use permit for requirement to run ads? I mean, thank you for sharing that, but that's a good idea. It's more outreach and it's, it's making them commit to outreach. Can we do that or can we not do that?
Yeah.
You're giving me a funny look.
No, sure.
Okay.
So is that, do you have a good, good direction from us, Greg?
Did I hear that you want to issue, reissue the permits every thirty days with conditions? We'll, we'll work with Bird to develop those conditions as, as we get more experienced with this, we may change those conditions with subsequent permits.
Yeah. And they're, we're going to be indemnified ASAP? And that they're going to be providing us with a revenue sharing program that is suitable for El Segundo.
I think the last piece of it is just giving the chief a little bit of direction as to how heavy of a hand we want him to lay down on this.
Well, I think that's, I think that's his call, yeah.
Make summer miserable, chief.
Well, he stood here at the mic and he did say to us that he's been waiting on this enforcement element on us.
The chief has been, I just want to give a big shout out to chief. He's been nothing short of incredible the past like three weeks since through all this. Like when, I think when you guys were out at a convention or something when we first launched, like, he's been tremendous to, like, in communication stuff and all the stuff that he's done. And the PSA that you guys rolled down in three weeks, I was just, I just want to give him a big shout out for that because he did a great job on all this stuff. And, and, and just one quick question on, for you council member, one of the four things you had on there was volume. So I'm just, what is the volume aspect you're looking for?
Yeah, the, the metric about what sort of volume you use and what dictates that. I think that's one of the questions that when you, when, as this evolves, what the, what the plan looks like is how many of these are going to be on the streets? Because I think one thing that frustrates people is the visual clutter they feel around there. Now, most of that ideally is obviated by finding good parking spots. But that will be chiefly in the downtown zone. If people start seeing them in front of every fourth house or laying them in the street, then that's going to be something that's going to make, that, that will, you know, affect the quality of life in a way that we will be forced to address for our constituents.
Yeah, so on the volume issue, the way that we work with other cities, and I'm sure Paul and others know this, is we require at least, if we're not meeting random rides per scooter per day, we have to reduce those scooters in the market. So you could keep, make that number four or five rides per day or whatever you might want to make it. And we'll share that data with them every month that we're applying for that re-permit. If we're not meeting those numbers, then we have to reduce scooters. And if we are meeting those numbers and we're seeing higher demand, then we get to add, you know, we would add more scooters to the market and keep increasing those numbers.
And then as far as the chief, for chief, the direction I believe for citations, if someone is riding them on a sidewalk, we want to issue citations for that?
Well, I, I thought we were just told that that's his discretion.
Let you do it, but.
My direction on enforcement and then we'll just handle this as we would any other violation.
But I think, I'll say then, from my perspective, I would prefer them not to be riding on the sidewalk.
As I, as I mentioned when I started the presentation, we, any sort of new thing, let's just say we put a new stop sign up and people aren't used to it. You're going to have violations. It's just going to happen because they're not used to it. So we typically will start out with an education campaign. If you PSAs don't run a stop sign, then we'll start pulling people over and warning them. Then after we've done that for a period of time, then ticket book comes out. And I envision a very similar thing here. Now, I'm, I'll be interested in, in, if the legislation's changing next week, we're not going to go out and write a bunch of tickets that are just going to get voided in court. So I'll have to do a little research on that just to confirm that's what's happening with the legislation. And that is the primary violation is no helmet. But there's still, if being operated in unsafe manner, that needs to, just like any other car, anybody else doing anything unsafe, it needs to be addressed. But we'll do a little research on the legislation. If it's going to change next week, we'll, we'll hold off a little bit. But then after that, we'll start warnings and then we'll, as appropriate, write citations.
Actually, just, you just reminded me one thing. One of the things, Tim, I think you mentioned is that you can put a timestamp, time clock on it so they can't operate after certain hours. Do we want to have the city provide that? Because I know there's been some, there's some concern about people leaving the bars and driving around drunk on these. So we should, the timestamp needs to be.
Absolutely don't want, which is why we stop at nine PM.
Nine PM, okay.
Nine PM. And, and as, as the thirty months, as the thirty days goes on, when you get closer to winter, we can move that back down to eight PM. And so, yeah. So that, you open your app, but your app at nine oh one, can't rent a bird. If you're on a bird at eight fifty-nine, you, until you end your ride, you're on your bird, but at nine PM it shuts off.
Anything else? Chris, Dawn, anything? No?
I think if you, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
All right. So you have enough direction from us? All right. So that concludes number twelve.
Invite Drew back in.
Invite Drew back in. Should we take a five minute recess? So he, I mean, we, we don't have much left. We'll give two minutes. Yeah, two minute recess.
Okay, we're going to turn this over to city attorney Mark Kinsley.
Yes, mayor and council, this item is being brought to you. It relates to, well, simply electronic communications that are being engaged in by the council and the committees, commissions, committees and boards, I'll just say the CCBs. And it's been established now for over a year by a state Supreme Court case that any electronic communications that council members have or other public officials, the commissioners, are public records. And that would, in today's world, I don't know what it'll look like tomorrow, but in today's world, that's mainly emails and texts and social media. And so if a council member is communicating electronically about something that is within the scope of city business, then that is a public record. Now, there are some exceptions. Well, there's, there's still public records, but there's some exceptions where they have, don't have to be turned over to the public. And then there are, the commissioners with, when they are communicating electronic about something that's within the scope of their commission, planning commission, we, planning issues, arts and culture, the, the things that come within their purview. So it's, those are the type of things, those communications that are public records that the city has an obligation to store for a period of two years. And this has been talked about for some time now in the council and the committees, commissions and boards have been provided with information about this and memorandum. And so part of this policy is just a restatement of what the law is. But the other part of this arises from the desire by staff and to the benefit of the, of the city hopefully to try to make it easier for staff to search for emails when we get public records requests. And that's really a large driver of this. Although, as I'm reading more and more news articles around the state and, and things happening with public records act requests and public officials not necessarily wanting to turn over electronic communications, it, it does make a lot of sense to have a policy. People still may not want to turn them over, but I think part of the process and, and a reason for having the policy is people think about the fact communicating, council members or the public officials are communicating, they're thinking about the fact that what I'm writing is something that everybody has a right to read. All we have to do is get a request tomorrow. I'll have to give over all my emails and people should be cognizant of that. And the more we put that in a policy and we reinforce that, I think that that's helpful to everyone so that hopefully there aren't those oops communications that you don't want in public. And it's the same as true with the texts and the social media posts. And probably the most difficult to store will be the social media posts and I guess you have to screenshot them, whatever. But with regard to the emails, which is what we see most of the public records requests for is, we moved, staff came up with the idea of trying to get all of the council and all the commissions to use city email addresses. That way it all passes through the city server. And if we get a request, we can have the IT staff go in and search for through the emails and at least scope it down to those that are likely to have. Sometimes we get requests that are related to individuals. Sometimes we get requests that are subject matter related. And so we have to work at a process to determine how to get to emails. But it is easier if they're all in one place as opposed to having to contact people and have them look through different personal email accounts and search for them. And so that is the recommendation. We took it to the IT, the tech committee a number of months ago and they were on board with the idea of having all of the commissioners and given, be given an email address to the city so that we could track this. Most of their concentration was on the domain name or the, the email address. And they, they thought this was the, the best way to try to capture them in one place and make it efficient for staff to search for them. And since that times, set times, Charles has, and I think with the IT committee, they've found some new software for searching emails to make that faster. But by and large, this policy is just a restatement of what the law is currently and what the obligations are of the public officials to keep electronic communications. And it is setting forth that the council and the missions will use the electronic email for their city business communication. And that will, we recognize, take some time to, it will always take some time to turn over or to process through because you will get new commissioners, new council members, and they will need to educate the people that are emailing them about how to email to the correct address or, worst case scenario, when you respond back, copy it to the city as an email, your city email address as you're responding it to the person. Or the best, just try to get them from your email account and migrate them to the city email account. That's however you best figure that out, but we, we've talked about that. And to try to maybe put some on your, on your auto response or on some tagline on your email to try to encourage people to use your city of El Segundo email address. And that's what we're trying to push everything. It's really to save time and to make it more efficient and potentially to make it less likely that some court is going to grab onto your personal devices and want to search through all of them. Because if we have a practice of doing this, then it's less likely, and people are following the practice, and it's less likely your personal devices will get seized. And they have been in some cities. And through litigation is another means. If we get litigation subpoenas, we have to give up documents. So that's what this is aimed at. It's, it's pretty simple and straightforward, but it, it does require, well, it needs council approval and it's going to require some thought process and deliberate actions by the public officials and kind of a pain. Candidly, and there's going to be some claim, complaining about it, I'm sure, but we have an obligation to meet the law and it is what it is.
From a practicality standpoint, will they be able to have this email available on their personal devices?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of committee, commission and board members that leave, I assume there'll be some kind of catchall address. They get emailed after their term's up. They're not still getting emails. Like, are we going to be so efficient that the day that their, their term is expired? Assuming they're not renewed or something that?
Well, it's, I mean, like we would do with a staff member, yes. Their access will be cut off and that's the process.
And it'd be forwarded to somebody else in the committee. There'd be a catchall or a staff member. Okay? Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to adopt the resolution as written?
So moved.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Five oh. Okay. So we are moving on to item, oh, report, city manager. Yeah, thank you.
I'll pass tonight. Thank you.
Okay. City attorney?
I will pass also. Thank you.
Madam clerk?
Following suit.
All right. City treasurer is no longer here. Councilmember Pimentel?
Just a very brief thank you to the city employees for the Fourth of July efforts, which came off swimmingly. And then the fire department, I know all too well, and I said to them the pain of letting, of making someone put through a demonstration for you. And they did with aplomb. I let me sit in on a training exercise the other morning in searing heat, watched them do a fire attack demonstration. It was very impressive. So thanks to them. I know that's no fun.
Cool. All right. Councilmember Nichol?
I shall pass.
Councilmember Bran?
Pass.
Mayor Pro Tem Purstuck?
Yeah, I do want to talk about a little bit, we've had some meetings about the, I just want to give an update on the pool. The new, the new aquatic center is now pushed back, probably won't open until around September. And then as far as the pool fees, we met.
September twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth.
September twenty-eighth, okay, so late fall, sorry, yeah, fall. That's right. And then we did have some conversations around the pool fees. And have, Meredith, have we communicated those out, the changes that we've made to the public yet? Okay, so we will be communicating out some changes to the pool fees in, as a response to some of the concerns we received from the public. I'll let you, I'll let them when they go out. You can announce them. And then I just wanted to congratulate the parks on the concerts in the park. Thank you Parks and Recs for doing that. And then I get a big, a, a, update on the website. We are down to a shortlist of three as in our RFP selection. We've been having demonstrations this week, so hopefully we can move forward and get a selection process going forward. And then the, just a quick update from the Lakes Task Force, they, we are down to a shortlist of, how many? Five. And they have been doing presentations all week as well. So we're moving forward on those two initiatives. So we're moving forward on those two initiatives.
Thank you, just to clarify all, how many proposals do we get, eight or nine? Just want to clarify that although not all made the shortlist, obviously, all proposals are subject to consideration by the council. Uh, on the aquatics thing too, one other thing, um, is just from a process standpoint, Meredith, can you update that same page to Mayor Protem's point? That we've been using for all the aquatics information with the FAQ and everything else? Heard you, here's what's changing going forward? We could just, because that way we can push people to that site, get people in the habit of that, great. Quick thing, um, oh man, now I lost my, sorry, you got to bear with me, I'm trying to follow Scott Nichol's, uh... Precedent, here we go, all right, uh, well, thank you to all the departments, as, uh, councilman Pimblet, Pimentel said, it was great. Um, I, I'm proud to say that I took, um, first place in the mayor versus city council pie eating contest against one of the council members up at the dais to be, uh, unnamed. And, uh, it was great having Quanis there hosting the pie eating and Rotary was there, my mom actually was doing the Rotary, uh, watermelon eating contest, it was great. Uh, Scott, Chris and I went along with the city attorney to city manager to Monterey for League of Cities training, it was a two-day intensive exercise. We learned a lot about pensions, about how to lead effectively, how to work with staff, a lot of the trends, uh, a lot of the housing initiatives that are coming down from Sacramento as well, time well spent, it's great. I want to congratulate the El Segundo Little League, I just found out that the ten U, uh, championship game for section four is tomorrow, five fifteen at Torrance. Congrats to Jeanette Osborne, I've had the good fortune of coaching her kids in soccer, she's awesome, so is her husband Ryan. And the twelve U team is, has its championship tomorrow as well. Then a quick plug for an event, there's an event at Dodger Stadium, August twenty-fifth at six ten PM, Dodgers versus Padres, it's the One Legacy fundraising event, which is to inspire and educate the community about the importance of organ, eye and tissue donation. So it's a great cause and I promised I would mention that tonight. Item fourteen, consideration and possible action to send a letter of support for the South Bay Cities, uh, South Bay Cities Council of Government and, uh, to Metro for their planned modifications of the green line service. I'm on the steering committee of the COG and we've been talking about, uh, in the transportation, separate transportation meetings, a decision that Metro was about to make without intervention by some of our colleagues from Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach and Manhattan Beach that went down there and testified to Metro to prevent them from, basically what they want to do is, and there's a memo in here, but there was a letter that was drafted by the COG to go to Metro. And they wanted to build like a stub line, essentially discontinuing service from Norwalk down to Redondo Beach in the future. And, um, there also, you know, would require a connection to get to LAX and a lot of things that would be detrimental to our riders, either commuters, employees coming into the town or coming up from Redondo Beach. And we think it was a short-sighted consideration, there's a complicated why structure that's going to go into place for the green line with the connection to Crenshaw. But, uh, the Metro or the, I should say the COG is encouraging Metro to consider other options, I think Ken, your department's been involved or starting to get involved in this process. So the letter is just, do we want to, is El Segundo encourage Metro to strongly discourage them from pursuing that strategy? Which would add significant time to riders that actually have to get off the line, get on a shuttle bus to continue service. But that's what the letter is in support of them considering other, to consider other alternatives. So I would just ask for the council's support on that, I, I didn't want to endorse it without going to the council first.
So moved.
To clarify, the, the one thing I would, you don't have to get on a bus, you have to get off the train, walk across the platform and get on a, a separate train as opposed to staying, staying in your seat.
That's right, thank you.
Let's send it.
Yeah, I, I'll send, I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think that was Dr. Bran making a motion and Carol making a second. All right, see, that's how we get things done, too bad I wasn't here for the bird discussion. All right, uh, public communications, now's the time and place.
Oh. Val Smith, ten forty-two East Imperial, um, I've never lived in a city or town that the residents didn't pay for their garbage. I, I, I find that astounding, I think it's very lucky that El Segundo residents haven't had to pay all these years. And I think if you take the six months or nine months to educate them, they'll understand, especially with the financial condition of the city. But what I'd like you to include is I moved here from Atlanta and I had recycling at my house. At my apartment, they're not forced to recycle, and it's a real step back for me not to have a place to recycle. So I hope that, that can be enforced for one to four units or whatever the size is for apartment buildings. That's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you, Val Smith, AKA Mom. Please.
Uh, good evening, council, um, I'm speaking to you, uh, my name is Blair Frye, I'm, uh, speaking to you as a lifelong El Segundo resident as well as an avid cyclist and an urban planning grad student, so, um, the issue of bird has been really fascinating to watch unfold. Most of, um, what I've heard in the discussion here today as well as discussions through, um, groups such as the El Segundo Parents Network and just casually talking to people on the street, um, it seems to be the, the main, the general consensus of the constituents is the issue of safety. Um, I, a lot of the, um, solutions we've discussed around safety involve, um, punitive solutions and individually focused solutions on enforcement. And what I would instead like to propose is to look at this as an opportunity to, um, think about how we can design our streets to be safer and more accommodating for other modes of transportation. I know several people, um, who are afraid to bike in town because they do not feel safe on the streets to do so. And I think in the same way, if, uh, people felt safer to ride the birds on the streets than they would instead of on the sidewalks, um, and measures to improve road safety and, um, improve accommodations for other kinds of transportations can be simple as just putting a cyclist, uh, road marker on the road, on the right lane, in similar way to what is on Hermosa Avenue and Hermosa Beach, that automatically signals to cars that's like, to be aware of cyclists and, um, other pedestrians as well as, um, um, create essentially a bike lane without having to implement a road diet or widen the road in any, in any such way. Um, I, um, I agree with a lot of the general consensus that, um, this kind of design and these sorts of bike road transit models are not going to go away. So rather than shut them down immediately, I think it is in the best interest for us as a, as a city that's moving into, um, a century that's greener, where, um, there's more aggressive action from the state to reduce carbon emissions, where fewer, where, um, gas is becoming more and more expensive, more people are turning into other, turning to other options. Um, cycling around town, I see more and more people every day cycle. So I think, um, creating an environment that allows other sorts of transportation to exist and thrive and building a foundation for that will, excuse me, will, um, create safer roads and, uh, give people more options.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Okay, any council comments on the public communication? I would just add, Ms. Frye, that we, uh, we have been talking recently about how we're going to implement the South Bay Master Bike Plan, Master Plan? I forget the exact nomenclature, sorry? Bicycle Master Plan, and it's been, it's a regional effort, so we are working on that and, uh, we've had conversations about that recently, so. I don't know if there's any update, it's in our CIP discuss, the, oh yeah, okay, so it's coming, thank you. Thank you, and point noted about the lack of recycling for the R three plus units, thank you. All right, that concludes public communications and we're not going back to closed session for a change, this meeting is adjourned pre-midnight.